It is on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hello, hello, everyone. If you would take your seats, we'll go ahead and start. Who do we have? Which is, this is charter review? Oh, okay, okay. All right. We're ready to go, everybody? All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 27 Bennington Public Hearing on the Charter Review and also the Bennington Select Board. What we're going to do is first introduce ourselves, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and the Vision Statement, and then move into the public hearing on the charter amendments. We have sign language interpretation this evening for the public hearing portion of the meeting. So with that, my name is Jeanne Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'll ask fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods.
I'm Tom Haley.
And I'm Gene Connor.
Thank you. Also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our town manager. We have Nancy Lively taking excellent minutes. We have Jonah Spivak making sure the IT works beautifully, presentations work beautifully, and we have Josh Boucher from Cat TV filming us live as they do at all our meetings, which is wonderful. So with that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you lead us, Ed?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ed. And Tom, would you read our vision statement that guides our work, please?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much.
No troubles.
All right. So we will now move into the public hearing on the proposed charter amendments. I'm going to read them, so hopefully you have copies or have seen the language, but I'm going to read them. So this is the first of two public hearings. The residents of the Town of Bennington qualified by law to vote are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility this evening and also on Monday, February 10 at 5:30 to hear and discuss proposed amendments to the Town of Bennington Charter. So Article One, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington, whoops, yes, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section to Subchapter Eight as follows: Requirements for legal resident voters who are not citizens. A, notwithstanding the provisions of 17 VSA Chapter 43, a legal resident who is not a citizen of the United States shall be a legal voter at a local Town of Bennington election if the individual meets the following qualifications: is a legal resident of the United States, is not less than 18 years of age, has taken the voter's oath, resides in the Town of Bennington as residency is defined in 17 VSA Section 2122, and has registered to vote with the Board of Registration of Voters no later than the deadline established by Vermont law for that election or meeting. B, for the purposes of this section, a legal resident of the United States means any non-citizen who resides in the United States on a permanent or indefinite basis in compliance with federal immigration laws. C, this section does not change a non-citizen's ability to vote in any state or federal election. And D, a legal resident voter who is not a citizen may cast a ballot only for local officials and local public questions specific to the Town of Bennington. So that's Article One. Article Two, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section to Subchapter Eight as follows: Youth Voters. A, notwithstanding the provisions of 17 VSA Chapter 43, youth voters shall be legal voters in local Town of Bennington elections. B, for purposes of this section, youth voters means a person who is 16 to 18 years of age and is otherwise qualified to vote in Town Elections pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 43, Subchapter One, and under the provisions of this charter. C, this section does not change a youth voter's ability to vote in any state or federal election. D, a youth voter may cast a ballot only for local officers and local public questions specific to the Town of Bennington. Article Three, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section to Subchapter Eight as follows: The filing of a notice of lien resulting from a judgment by a court of competent jurisdiction for fines in an enforcement proceeding under the Town of Bennington's Land Use and Development Regulations, Property Maintenance Ordinance, or Housing Building and Life Safety Ordinance shall have priority in law over any other lien having priority in time. Such underlying enforcement lien shall remain valid and subsisting lien upon such real property until such fines are fully paid or otherwise discharged, but not longer than eight years from the date of such judgment unless it shall have been renewed pursuant to Vermont law. Article Four, which refers to the local option tax, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to change the language in Section 103-511A to add the following as subsection five thereto: A 1% tax on non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Article Five, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to change the language of Section 103-406A to Subchapter Four as follows: Unless expressly modified by contract, on 90 days' written notice from the Select Board, the Town Manager may be removed without cause by a majority of the Select Board at a meeting called for the purpose of voting on removal. During the 90-day period, the Town Manager may be suspended with pay. And Article Six, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section to Subchapter Three as follows: Nine, delegate the responsibility to review video footage, transcripts, and other materials following an investigation of a complaint against the Police Department to the existing Community Policing Advisory Review Board or to another board established by the Select Board to replace the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. All right. Those are the six articles. What I'd like to suggest that we do, this is a time for us to hear from you, so we are here to answer questions as best we can, but this is really a time to hear from you. We would ask that you try and keep your comments fairly short. If you can keep them to three minutes, that's fine. At three minutes, we're not going to cut you off, but Gene will put up that 30-second sign just to let you know you're at three minutes, and at four minutes, we'll encourage you to wrap up. What we'll do is let everyone that wants to speak, speak for one time, and then we'll start back around. So if you don't get to say everything you want to say the first time around, you certainly can say it the second, all right? All right. Having said that, I only have two people. Say again?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
This is the first time we see the language since we discussed it for the first time. There are still questions that we asked the first time around that haven't been answered.
So according to Stuart, I did ask that question. They were answered, and we actually have seen this language because we approved it. We approved this language, and Stu did come back with answers to the questions, but it's perfectly fine for the audience to ask those questions again. So having said that, let me start with Jackie Matts, who chaired the Charter Review Committee. And you can use either microphone.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jackie Matts. I'm a resident of Bennington, Vermont, and for the past five months or so, I've had the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Charter Review Committee. I think that our committee has done an excellent job. We put out a 50-page report. I don't really have a lot of facts to add to that tonight. You're welcome to go read it. I hope you will. I do want to say that there has been some misinformation put out, in particular by one person that's running for the Select Board this year, so I just want to clear up a couple things there. In particular, none of the Charter Review Committee's recommendations nor the language that's been put forth by our Select Board here tonight would allow a non-resident to vote. So if somebody is telling you that, that's a lie, I encourage you to go do the research and find the correct information. The recommendations that the Charter Review Committee put forth reinforce the ideals in our vision statement that Bennington should be a welcoming, inclusive, engaged community where everyone has the opportunity to grow and thrive. That's not possible if people can't find a house to live in or if they're unable to have a voice in how we're governed. If I've learned anything as a leader, it's that people will rise to the expectations that we set for them. So if we expect them to approach the responsibility of voting with maturity, they will do that. And if we expect them to react flippantly to the suggestions that they see on ballots, they will rise to that, too. So I will say that when 16- and 17-year-olds vote, they do so thoughtfully and responsibly. These individuals in our community, they care about other people, right? They are some of the most dedicated volunteers that I've had the privilege of serving alongside in our town. They offer our community the opportunity to look into the future, and when they start voting early, they become lifelong voters. Immigrants and refugees in our community, many of whom are on a path to citizenship, are part of the fabric of our community. This is not a progressive idea. This is actually a return to traditional Vermont values, as evidenced by the fact that these populations were allowed to vote in municipal elections statewide until 1977. These individuals pay the same taxes we do, and they have to abide by the same laws and regulations that this board enacts. They should be given the same opportunity to have a voice in how they're governed. On the side of housing, the housing vacancy rate in Bennington is disastrously low. The impact of short-term rentals has been devastating in many communities, and I believe Bennington needs to stand ready to protect our housing supply from financial exploitation if and when we need to do so. And if vacant houses represent an opportunity in our community to prioritize Bennington's people over profits, blighted properties represent an even greater opportunity. Blighted properties do not contribute to community safety. They do not contribute to property values, and they do not contribute to our tax base. Ignoring this problem costs our town financially and socially. We must address it with whatever means is at our disposal. The recommendations that we've put forth are a way that we can send a message to the people who live in Bennington today and to the people who will move here in the future. The message is that your voice matters here, no matter where you come from. The message is that you will be safe here. The message is that we care about our homes and about our neighborhoods. So I'm asking you, please remember to show up and vote on March 4. Vote yes for your neighbors. Vote yes for your neighborhoods. And if you need help filling out a mail-in ballot, requesting a mail-in ballot, or you need a ride to the polls, please get in touch with me. My name's Jackie Matts. I'm really easy to find these days. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next up, we have Mona Gothier. Mona, you can use either.
I would like to respond to Jackie.
So, so, address us.
Okay.
Address us, okay. But introduce yourself, please.
It's, my name's Mona Gothier, Bennington, Vermont. I've lived here 74-plus years, and never have teenagers been able to vote on town-wide town, what do I want to call it? Town voting that the taxpayers pay for, and this has been the first time that it's been brought, brought up. And my question is, is it because of the turf with the football so that you guys can get the turf field that you wanted? Don't laugh.
No, I'm only laughing because...
It's not funny because, that is, and don't look so smug. It's, it's, it's the taxpayer, it's like, I feel like you're going through the back door because we voted it down twice, and all of a sudden, it's on the ballot that the kids can vote. And I remember being at one of the meetings or watching it on TV where it was slightly suggested that the kids might have an input on it. And you could go back and look in your Cat TV. But I feel like we're being disrespected, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Mona. And because I laughed, I will respond, and you can respond in your own way. I laughed because this board, some people on this board voted in favor of the turf bond three times, and some people at this table voted against it three times. And I think that it certainly, as far as I know, it did not have any bearing. I do, I do, I am sure that it was brought up as something that, that 16, 17-year-olds might care about, just as their parents might, or just as anybody in a community. But I, yeah, it was, definitely, we are not of all-one opinion on the Select Board. Was there something else you wanted to say to that, or?
That vote, if you remember correctly, was a district-wide, a school district-wide vote. This, this board has no jurisdiction over that particular event. Thank you.
Oh. So we, so a student would not, a 16-year-old and 17-year-old, so Jackie, you can't get up yet again unless everybody else is asked. A 16- and 17-year-old cannot vote in a school vote, any kind of school vote, and that was a school vote because it crosses Town lines. So Shaftesbury, Arlington, Powell, all, all voted on the turf issue. It was a school vote. So this would only be Town, Town issues. So it could only be something that was, that the Select Board, so the Select Board had nothing to do with the turf vote. We voted as, as any other voter, but it was not a Town vote. It was a school vote, okay?
Then can you explain to me what the purpose of the 16-year-olds, 17, 18-year-olds voting has to do, they don't, they don't get to vote on any of the Town stuff that costs money?
No, no, no.
They do get to vote on...
They would, yes. Town budgets, water and sewer bond budgets, bonds, anything the taxpayers...
But only Town things.
I guess my question still is...
Come up then to the mic.
Yeah, yeah. Cat TV can't hear you.
So I'm still questioning why we would allow 16, 17, and 18-year-olds to vote on something that's not going to come out of their pocketbooks, it's going to come out of their parents' pocketbooks, which parents probably might disagree with their, because I know my teenagers didn't always agree with me, so...
Okay. All right. I'll make it clear to the Charter Review.
Yeah, I just want to jump in before we do that and make it clear, Mona, that your issue is different than how you started out. That's, that's, and I, I need to make that distinction.
How is it different?
This has nothing to do with a turf field. Thank you.
My, that was, that wasn't how I started out. When I started, what I started out with was kids voting.
Okay. So Mona, I think, so we will all have our own reasons for voting. I think I will ask if someone from the Charter Review group wants to come back up and explain from the, from the perspective of that group, why they chose to include it. So I'm going to ask you to sit down and, and have them respond.
One more point. I did get the point where Jackie said it's to ensure that they vote continually, to encourage them to vote. I think we could learn that through school.
Okay, thank you. Does someone, yes, please, come on up, introduce yourself. Either mic.
Can I make a comment while Michael's walking up to the...
Sure.
I want to make it emphatically clear, there has never been any coordination between the SVSU and this board on anything to do with the turf field. Never. What you're reading or hearing is garbage.
We don't talk as, why this, all of this...
It shouldn't be...
I know, we shouldn't. All right. So I'm going to give you the floor. Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Michael Moscato, resident of Bennington, member of the Charter Review Committee. And Mona, I just want to start out by saying that one of the, the great things that we learned through this Charter Review process is the benefit of having the open discussion with people who disagree, and that's part of what makes this Town process great, that's part of what makes this country great, is that we have the ability to have these conversations as opposed to one person or one body making these decisions. So with that in mind, when we talk about the 16- and 17-year-old voters, there's a couple of things that you mentioned in there. Where I want to start the conversation is that this Charter Review Committee was put together as members of this community, volunteer members that were tasked with addressing issues that were brought to them first by members of the Town to the Select Board, who then tasked the Charter Review Committee with addressing those. The topic of discussion came up with the youth vote to include 16- and 17-year-olds. Now, as you mentioned, that is a new idea, and I think you mentioned since 1974, that's never been done before. And I think one of the things that, just from a personal perspective, I won't talk for the whole Charter Review Committee, but change doesn't necessarily have to be something that we're afraid of. And our thought process as the Charter Review Committee, as we addressed two things. One was, can this be done legally? Do we have the legal standing to include 16- and 17-year-olds? And through counsel, it was determined that we had protections federally, at the state, and with the Town. So could it be done? Yes. Then the second part of that was, should it be done? And we stand by our effort to, again, dive deep into that conversation and bring that question to you, so that you personally can go to the polls on March 4. I think I got that date right. March 4, and you can make that decision. And if you don't want 16- and 17-year-olds to vote, you have that privilege to cast a vote that says no. And people who do want them to vote have that privilege to say yes. Now, the last thing I'll say on this topic is through my own research and through our research, there's a long history of change regarding voting. It wasn't that long ago before you would not have been able to vote yourself. It was not that long ago that certain people were considered three-fifths of a vote. It was not that long ago that we were sending young men and women to fight battles overseas without them having a decision in whether or not that would happen. We still live in a society right now where we can send young men and women to die on the battlefield, but they can't drink a beer. So all of that is to say, there's room for discussion, and part of the great component to this process is that we're here as all Benningtonians to have this discussion together, and on March 4, we will come to a decision on that. And the last, the last component to the 16- and 17-year-olds that you touched on, and I just want clarity on because it impacts a lot of the different decisions, you referred to taxpayers. One of the things that I want everybody to be careful with going into March 4 is generalizing everybody into the same situation. There are 16-year-olds who have jobs. I know, I definitely had my first job before I was 16. There are some people who are tasked with raising children before the age of 16. There are 17-year-olds that are taking care of their parents, who might be ill, or maybe they don't have parents. So there's a lot to consider, and I would just caution people, instead of generalizing 16- and 17-year-olds as one thing, to understand that it's not just that black and white. And while I can certainly say that I'm a completely different person than I was at 16 and 17, and it sounds like maybe you were as well, that's not for me to decide the next person and their situation, because I haven't lived a day in their shoes. So as far as the voting goes, I just wanted to make that clear, and if there's anything else that comes up, happy to address it. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, Maria. Either microphone, just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Maria Corrales, resident of Bennington, Vermont. Matts made it clear to us on several fronts regarding outstanding questions. We asked her, are they going to be citizens of Vermont? Are they going to be naturalized citizens? Are they residents? We asked her a lot of questions, and she cleared it all for us. My problem is that, how is it going to be worded on the ballot? Is it going to encompass everything that she said?
So Maria, can I stop you? I think probably you came in late. We read through the warning, so the warning includes all of that, and, and we did approve that warning in an open meeting as well, but the, we did read through it. Yeah, so it is all included there.
So everything that she referenced, 16- or 17-year-olds that are what? Can you repeat it for me, please?
Do you want to read it, Tom? Would you, the 16- and 17-year-old one? So that's Article Two.
Article Two. This is how it'll appear on the ballot. Article Two, shall the Charter of the Town of Bennington be amended to add a section 103-808, Subchapter Eight as follows. Subchapter 103-808, Youth Voters. A, notwithstanding the provisions of 17 VSA Chapter 43, youth voters shall be legal voters in the Town of Bennington elections. B, for the purpose of this section, youth voter means a person who is 16 to 18 years of age and is otherwise qualified to vote in Town Elections pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 43, Subchapter One, and under provisions of this charter. C, this section does not change a youth voter's ability to vote in any state or federal election... ability to vote in any state or federal election. D, a youth voter may cast a ballot only for local officers and local public questions specific to the Town of Bennington. That's the exact-
So this pretty much describes the permission that was granted, but you used the term legal voters, and that's always been a contentious issue. What does legal voters mean? You know, are they natural born citizens? Are they naturalized citizens? I mean, that has always been, and she clarified for us. In fact, she said to us on that specific issue, she cleared it for us, as she said, there will be sixteen and seventeen year olds that were born in the United States or naturalized citizens, because they have the legal right to vote. Now, does that mean, anyone else?
No, it's telling you, so this is laying out exactly who can vote. So the same people that can vote right now, except you could be sixteen seventeen, you know, some eighteen year olds can vote now, depends on when your birthday is, but sixteen seventeen eighteen year olds. So it would add, it would change the age limitation. That's the only thing that it changes.
Is that the question that I asked, Ms. Jenkins?
Say again.
Is that the question that I asked?
Yes, I believe it is. Is it not?
No.
Oh, okay. Ask a question again.
The clarity that we asked for in the past was, were the, will the sixteen seventeen and eighteen year olds be born in the United States or naturalized citizens in the United States? And she said yes. And I don't see how that is clear in the ballot. It just says legal. Legal means a lot.
It really doesn't.
Yes, it does, because we have immigrants in the United States that we allowed in, and they are legal.
Legal voter.
And we have wonderful, wonderful settlement programs here.
So Maria, this is-
So there are others that are not.
So this is language that our, that town council drafted, that is legal language. So for-
You know, there's lowercase l and large L, right? Difference between the definitions of each?
So I'm just saying, this has been reviewed by council, and that question was settled. So, so I think you can rest assured that it is allowing, the youth vote is only looking at people that would be able to vote when they were eighteen anyway, but letting them vote when they're sixteen and seventeen.
So the same people that were eighteen year old that were allowed to vote before are the same people that now are sixteen and seventeen? Same thing? Nothing's changed?
Correct.
So I can hold what she said to the letter? What she said on-
Yes, and, and I think more importantly, you can hold the, the warning, the charter amendment to the letter, because this is what you're voting on.
But it's vague.
This is exactly what will be on the ballot that you vote on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm just curious, is, is, do you believe that the standard, for anyone to register to vote, it will be the same process that anyone would go to to register to vote?
With the same requirements.
With the same requirements, that if, if the person was sixty-five, was going to register to vote in the state, it will be the exact same process. The person will just happen to be born in the years that would, that would encompass a sixteen or seventeen year old. But the standard on how you register to vote and the, and you know, the proof that you have to present will be consistent. So I just was making sure.
You're saying that the state constitution says-
Maria-
Yes, it is. They are allowed to register.
Wait, Maria, if you want to, if you want to say something, please come up to the mic.
Saying such, then our state constitution, Vermont's constitution, has specific parameters. You have to be a resident for a fixed period of time before you can vote, before you're entitled to vote. Oh, yeah, the state's constitution-
Period of time.
Has a period of time.
So Maria, it is exactly, it follows the law. So exactly what the law is, the only thing that's changed in that, in that charter amendment is the age of people who can vote, not, not any other descriptor. All right?
So they still have to follow the other parameters?
Exactly.
And just for clarity-
Thank you.
You can walk into a polling place the day of the election, no, this is not what we're discussing here-
Oh, we know that.
And register to vote.
Right.
And that will, that will apply to a sixteen or seventeen year old as well.
Okay.
All right, yes, please, come on up, either mic, introduce yourself and state your question or, or comment.
Hi, Bridget Elder, resident of Bennington. And when I lived in Brooklyn, we had voters who were sixteen seventeen and eighteen, and that was a new thing for what we called participatory budgeting. And also, non, people who were not citizens were able to vote in this local thing that determined how a certain amount of money was spent. And it was very successful. It got younger people involved in what was going on, and, and I think it was a great program. And I've seen it done, and I've seen it work. So I think that that's a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
What voters won't see on the ballot is when you vote yes, sixteen or seventeen year olds can vote, or non-residents can vote, they automatically get the right to be able to serve on the Select Board and other boards and committees. And there are questions that haven't been answered as to how that's going to work, so.
Well, it would work like anything else. We had a high school student be a member of the Historic Preservation Commission last year, and it was incredibly successful. And he did the research that resulted in the walk that maybe thirty fifty people in this community attended on Pleasant, on Pleasant Street, looking at the old houses and the history of those houses. So, you know, in order to be on the Select Board, you have to win the election. And in order to be appointed to a board or commission, you have to put in your application and be selected, so.
But if the state and federal government doesn't recognize you, how are you going to be able to vote on state and federal programs and state and federal money coming to Bennington?
We don't vote on the, I think if any, if there are any questions, if there are any things that you can do-
There are grants that come to Bennington that we do vote on.
That's why we have a town manager. He will help us sort through that.
Well, the Select Board votes, though. That's the point I'm making.
Nancy?
Jeanie, it's a clear question. You can't keep shutting the question off.
It's not that it's not, it's not that it's not a good question or comment, it's that we can't really go down the rabbit hole, because we're not there yet. Okay?
But we can't answer that question for the voters.
But we did have a minor run for governor just a few years ago, and the court said he was perfectly qualified to do so.
That's true. How old was he?
So Ethan was, God, he was fifteen or sixteen, I think.
Yeah, okay. He did not win, I will point out. Okay, so who else would like to speak?
I'd like a comment. I just wanted to, there's a lot of people concerned, I see that here, and any change is scary, right? So I just wanted to point out, so this went to a committee for all of this, all the votes that are going to be voted on. And anything that may be voted yes will be going to legislature for review again. So anything that's voted yes is not a definite, it will be going to legislature for review. So just keep that in mind as well.
And the other one?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Oh, yes, Kelly. You're in the back.
Hi, Kelly Carroll, resident of Bennington. I disagree with the sixteen and seventeen year olds being allowed to vote. And some of the reason for this has to do with the Vermont Legislature. So as you know, or most people will know, sixteen and seventeen year olds in Brattleboro are allowed to vote. That went through their charter review. It went through the process of going through the legislature. It was passed through the legislature. Governor Scott overrode that. And from what I've heard, there's two reasons for that. One reason was taking it to the state level, and if this is something that Vermont decides to do, he felt that it should be at a state level and not a patchwork across the state. And then the second reason had to do with accountability. So the Vermont Legislature says that young adults who commit criminal offenses are not mature enough to contemplate the full range of risks and impacts of their actions. The Vermont Legislature has raised the Vermont age of accountability to twenty-two for violent offenses. That's also something they're looking at taking a big step back on. If approved by eligible voters, sixteen and seventeen year olds would be eligible to serve on any town board, excuse me, including the Select Board, but they won't be able to vote on our school budget or serve on the school board because we are in a supervisory union with other communities. So what this means is that Bennington taxpayers will have to pay for a special ballot for them. And the estimates coming out of the Charter Review presentation in November were approximately seventeen hundred dollars per election. So I just think if the Vermont Legislature is going to say that they're not considered mature enough to be held accountable for criminal offenses up to twenty-two, then we shouldn't be lowering the, the age of voter eligibility to sixteen. They can't have it both ways. So I just think if you're going to be eligible to vote, and you, then you're eligible to be on a board, I've heard some people say that it would be fun to have a sixteen or seventeen year old on the Select Board. I think being on the Select Board has very gratifying moments with it, with some of the stuff that you do, but I also think it's serious work and it's not really fun. And if there were some type of a program for the youth to come in and do like an apprentice type of learning, or something to encourage voting and, and citizenship, and being a better community member, then I think we should be all in on it. But I don't agree with sixteen and seventeens, and I also don't agree with non-citizens. I think it's a privilege for us, for residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Who else? Yes, please. Oh, wait, Michael, you've already been up.
So can I speak as myself?
Yes, you can speak as yourself, yes. Thank you for that clarification.
You take off my charter cloak. Michael Moscato, speaking as myself this time. I just have a question, and I'll direct it at Nancy, because she's a member of the Select Board, but it goes to everybody who's brought up this, this kind of point. What are you afraid of when we talk about sixteen and seventeen year olds? The reason I'm asking that question is because there seems to be this general idea that because somebody is sixteen or seventeen makes them less qualified to have skin in the game for their own future. And for me, hold on, for me, that, that's, that's the root of this. We can talk about Governor Scott and his personal opinion. But what we're talking about here with this vote are the members of this community's opinion, because we live in a democracy, in a republic, that allows members of this community to make decisions for themselves based off of the town that they want to live in, based off of the mission statement, the vision statement of the Town of Bennington, not of the Town of Governor Scott, with all due respect to him. And then when we talk about the twenty-two year old age for violent crimes, I don't think there's anybody in here who believes that an individual who's twenty-one shouldn't be held responsible for a violent crime. So if we can't have that conversation, if we're just going to say they're all babies until they're twenty-two, I don't think that's a popular, I don't think that's what the Town of Bennington wants. I don't think that's what most people in this country would want. And I think that's a far more dangerous slope. And I don't think it's something that should justify sixteen and seventeen year olds, again, who are participating in the community. We're investing in our kids to be the future of Bennington, to be the future of this country. We ask a lot of sixteen and seventeen year olds. Sixteen and seventeen year olds are exposed to a lot more than they were when I was sixteen and seventeen, when you were sixteen and seventeen. Life's getting harder for everybody, not easier. The Charter Committee was tasked with putting this to the, the town to answer this question. I would hate that the decision is based off of fear and not people making informed decisions, which is that there are federal protections. The federal government, federal law allows us to make determinations for what the Town of Bennington wants for the Town of Bennington. State law allows for the Town of Bennington to determine what the Town of Bennington wants in regards to this process. So to then turn around and make it like there's some sort of fear tactic, we don't go to a sixty-five year old person with inailing health and say, you can't vote. You're borderline dementia. You can't see. You grew up in a time where education, you can't read. We've never prevented those people from voting. We've never based voting off of psychology, off of your ability to read, your ability to interpret information, your education level, your job, your status. So to have the town turn around and say that a sixteen and seventeen year old is of less value than somebody who's eighteen to ninety-nine, a hundred, is just not something I can get by. And that's why I would ask, what, what are we so afraid of here?
I don't see it as fear at all. I don't hear many adults locally, statewide, across the country saying, hey, we should have kids vote. I think we need to leave the kids alone. They're going to deal with everything once they turn eighteen. I think kids are exposed to so much more today than they need to be. I don't, I don't, they voted in Brattleboro last year after they worked three or four years. Only twenty kids voted. I've talked to maybe ten or fifteen kids. They didn't know. I said, you interested? They said, no. So I really don't understand where all these kids are in Bennington saying, yeah, we want to get out to vote. And we do very little in Bennington. We have about ten thousand voters. We do very little to reach out to our voters that are registered, who are eighteen and above. So I would rather like to find out why our voters aren't turning out for town meeting, the most important vote of the year every year in Vermont for generations. Why are we so focused on the kids? Let's focus on the adults. Let's get them involved. But there's no fear with the kids voting.
It was brought to the, I just want to remind you that this, this particular issue was brought to the Charter Committee to review by the people of this town-
No, it was, it was the chair of the Select Board. It was the chair of the Select Board.
It made it through votes, so.
I will, I will interject at this point. It was brought to me by students in school in a class where this was actually discussed. So that is, so, so I, so, yeah, so it was brought, it was a suggestion that was brought to me that I put forward. Okay. So just to say that.
Well, I just haven't talked to any, I reached out to maybe fifteen kids, and not one of them knew, and they said, why would, no, we're not interested in voting.
Well, but that's, so again, there's a couple of different issues there, right? It's outreach to voters, which I would encourage, the more voters and the more voices here in Bennington that can participate each election is, is great. But I would also caution us to not, not vote yes on more voices, simply because only maybe twenty of them would show up. If anything, I think that makes the case to allow people, because as you just pointed out, if only twenty people show up, or if only ten thousand people vote in this town when there's potentially, you know, twenty thousand people available, then what is it harming to have a few more voices heard, especially if there's, if there's twenty? It's not a, it's not a major swing. And if, you know, in the cases of elections, when we talk about a sixteen year old potentially running against members of the Select Board, compete with the sixteen year old on ideas. And if there's enough people in this town that support the sixteen year old over an established professional or an older adult, then I think that says a lot about a lot. And-
So I want to make sure that we are, that we are letting the public go around. So you guys have already spoken once. Is there anybody that has not spoken that would like to share their thoughts? No, Mike didn't speak twice. We already went through that.
No, I would like to respond.
No, so we're not, so we're not really trying to do a back and forth here. I know that we just sort of did that with the Select Board, but Jack, you're up. Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, Jack Rostermanley, Bennington, Vermont. I just want to make the simple point that in the entire history of this country, we have only ever been strengthened when we've expanded the right to vote.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone that has not spoken yet, you spoke, Maria. Anyone that hasn't, that, yes, please, Chris, come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
Chris Maxi, Bennington. So I'm going to change the subject up and ask a question about a different provision. So my question, first is a clarifying question on the local option tax for short-term rentals. Is there currently a local option tax on all, the option for us to do a local option tax on lodging currently?
So what is, you want to, what, the local option tax, it's in the charter now?
Yes, the local option tax that is allowed by voter, the people here in Bennington, does cover meals and rooms as it does throughout the state of Vermont.
Okay. So just to understand that, then, this would be an additional local option tax on top of the lodging tax. So it would be a, if the town were to, say, add a local option tax for lodging, it would add one percent. And then if they did that for short-term rental, it would add another percent on top of that, correct?
Yes, for non-owner occupied short-term rentals, yes.
Okay. So I own- So, I own a building on Main Street and a couple of other buildings in the area. I have quite a few units that are regular rentals and then I have two that are currently Airbnbs. So, I think that the Airbnb or short-term rental market is kind of scapegoated as being the problem for the housing, the housing crisis, which I would say that I don't know, I've yet to see research that's saying that, you know, short-term rentals are the cause of it. Certainly in urban markets, that totally makes sense. There are definitely corporations buying up buildings and turning them into short-term rentals, but I don't know if that's necessarily the case for Bennington, Vermont. I think that for me, in my experience as, in purchasing my building on Main Street, one of the reasons that it made it possible, financially possible for me to have purchased that building is because I was able to put an Airbnb above it because I could get a higher rent, return on rent than if I had just put an apartment up there. Had that not been the case, I probably wouldn't have been able to make the debt-to-income ratio work. So, that being said, I think that there's something to be said and there is a use case for short-term rental that is useful. I don't think that there are all that many short-term rentals that are in Bennington compared to other markets. And I think that it's, that it feels a little bit like the town is clamping down on commercial and entrepreneurial endeavors because now somebody that doesn't own a hotel or a motel cannot get in on this market or is being adversely affected by something the town has imposed on them. You know, and with that being said, like myself and other people that have made these investments into these short-term rentals have put a considerable amount of money into it with the understanding that we would be able to make this work. And so, for, you know, you to put an extra tax on it and push people towards regular lodging as opposed to short-term rental feels a little bit anti-competitive. And I already pay more for my commercial real estate taxes. I pay more for my short-term rental insurance. I pay metered water and sewer. So, I'm already paying for a lot of things at a significant clip more than most others.
Thank you.
I do think it should be noted in that article that this would not put a tax on short-term rentals. This would give a future Select Board the choice to put that idea to the voters. So, that's not exactly, you know, the same thing. Your points are very valid. I just actually think they're putting it a little bit before, you know, the actual eventuality because we haven't brought forward a new options tax measure in quite some time.
No, I understand that. And I'm not opposed actually to a local option tax on lodging. I'm opposed to a local option tax that is specifically only on short-term rental. And also, logistically, how would you even execute that? Because for most of these small business owners that are doing this, the short-term rental companies are the ones remitting these payments. So, you're, I don't even know how you logistically would be able to do that in Vermont.
Okay. Thank you.
Stu, did you ever define what a short-term rental is for us?
No.
That was a question we did bring up.
I don't think so, actually. It wasn't. There is a definition, and I think where we landed with that is there is a state definition of it.
It is. It's under 30 days, I believe.
It's not an unknown. Yeah. We just don't know it, but yes, it is defined.
As under 30 days.
It is. It goes along with the requirement to collect the 9% rooms and meals tax. Over that 90 days, I'm sorry, over that 30 days, rooms and meals tax becomes null and void because now is a rental where a short-term, under 30 days, is a stay, not a rental. And there's that 9% meals and rooms and meals tax that applies.
And did it get clarified, would a motel owner, that the state is paying to use motel rooms for, say, people who are homeless, would that motel owner have to pay that 1% options tax?
No, we did clarify that with Stu.
Why wouldn't the motel owner, who's going to be making more than anybody with an Airbnb?
Whether we like it or not, that's just, it's just the rules. So, thank you, Chris. That was helpful.
Yeah, in that particular case, because the state is paying for the opportunity to house people.
Well, the state taxpayers are paying for that opportunity.
It's considered more than a short-term rental because they're generally there more than 30 days.
Is there someone who hasn't spoken who would like to ask a question or make a Going once, going twice. All right, round two. Anyone? Go for it, Mona.
I just want to.
Please introduce yourself again.
Mona Gothier, Bennington, Vermont. I just want to reiterate on the voting of the students because they are students and I feel that with the pressures with school and trying to get a good education so they can go to college, and I just think that that's the responsibility that the students, that would make them a good-abiding citizen is to better themselves through the education and along with the education would come the voting process. It's like putting the horse before the cart.
Thank you, Mona. Yes, Maria.
Thank you. So, allow me to answer that again.
Introduce yourself again, please.
Maria Corrales, Bennington, Vermont. So, back to the 16 and 17-year-olds, but this time following his conversation. All the Select Board members here seek outside assistance from attorneys. I've seen you try to understand verbiage in state legislation. I've seen you go to Stu Hurd to clarify things. He goes to the attorney and so forth. This is not just understanding the English language. It's legal jargon. So, 16 and 17-year-olds have to have some sort of capacity, and it's limited at 16 and 17-year-olds. In addition, accountability. If you make a mistake, any of you, with law, you're held accountable and really hard. So, how do we hold a 16 and 17-year-old accountable? How? They sign an indemnification clause or something? What do we do? They're going to be held accountable for not understanding the law? And if they don't understand it, who clarifies for them? You do? To make sure that they understand it the way you understand it? It's very, very iffy. You're all adults and you have experience, and a lot of experience as educators and management and, you know, different capacities, accounting, Mr. Hurd managing a building. So, I don't understand how you could think a 16 and 17-year-old. I have a son and there were times, I wouldn't say it. I was like, "Did he just say that?" Like, you know, because he hasn't matured enough. He hasn't read enough. He's not educated enough. All of you are. All of you are. And there's no way that they're going to tell me that a 16-year-old or 17-year-old has the, what, your capacity. That's an impossibility. They haven't been on this earth long enough. They don't have enough education long enough. Someone needs to decipher it, interpret it, and then they have to be held accountable. And I don't think that's fair. They're too young to be responsible for something so big and large.
Thank you. Any other questions on, or comments on any of the six articles that will be on the ballot? Yes, I see a hand.
I just got to say, I really don't think it's fear, that, you know, fear of change. I think, you know, change is inevitable. You have to have change to survive. I just think you have to look at accountability, you know? And if we're going to say that, you know, you can get away with crimes until X age, we shouldn't be lowering the age to vote. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that agenda. It's not fear, and I certainly don't know where the less value thing came because I have a lot of value for our youth. I think they're our future. I'm a little bit nervous for them, given some of the stuff going on, a lot nervous. But I don't think it's fear. I think it's, you know, Vermont, you can't have it both ways. You're either going to say you're an adult and you're going to be held accountable or you're not.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else like to speak before I ask for a motion to adjourn this hearing? Oh, Clark, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. Glad to see the room's full and they're getting more chairs. Great. I was contacted by some businessmen and some community members on the issue of Article 3, the town liens taking priority or precedent over other liens. And what's been communicated to me is a concern that this article may serve as a disincentive to businesses or investors to do business here in town, whether it be rental or selling property or financing property here. And I truly think we need to look much closer at that. I understand in conversations the difficulty the town even has in collecting on liens that are placed against property, but I think elevating our liens to priority over banks and finance companies and so forth runs the risk of not only making credit more expensive for those seeking it, but also is a disincentive for people to invest in our town. I keep hearing on many discussions that we want businesses to come here, we want the businesses here to expand, we want people here to have better incomes. And I think that this article may in fact be a disincentive to achieving those goals. Thank you.
Sure. Before we wrap up this topic, I want to remind everyone that the way that you see this morning is the way that it will be worded, which means that each individual article will be voted on individually. This board asked for that. That's how we are expecting to see it. That's why it's written this way. So, it's good that there's the opportunity to vote yes if you are in favor of any of the articles and you have the right to vote no if you are not in favor of any one or more. I think that this was the result of some very hard work on the Charter Review Committee, and I am grateful that voters have a choice in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak before I ask for a motion to close the hearing? And if you're waving your arm, wave it really high. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody.
I'll just have a quick question for Stu.
Go ahead. I'll just, I've got one.
On Article 5, why does it not state a 1% tax on non-owner occupied short-term rentals? Why doesn't it say a 1% options tax? Because it is an options tax, correct?
It's amending.
That's what the Charter Review Committee asked for.
Well, Article.
Article 5.
Five or four?
Oh, I'm looking at.
Yeah, don't look at the, yeah, look at.
It has to do with the 1% tax on non-owner occupied short-term rentals.
Yeah, I believe that the section that it is amending, Article 5, has to do with the local option tax.
It does, and it's to add to the following in the subsection.
This would add a fifth category.
But most voters aren't going to know that. I know that's what it says because I've read the Charter, but could we add options tax in there so the public will know that?
No, that's why we're having these two hearings. And that's when, when I read it, I said, "This Article 4 refers to the local option tax" because it does just have that piece in it. But this is what we warned. So, to go back and add, to go back and add that, what would it take to add? Well, we couldn't, no, because it has to be the language. It can't, yeah, it has to be language. It can't be a.
As you all know, you can amend the wording of the articles that are proposed. It would have to be by a vote of the board. I just, it would be essentially speaking twice to the issue because the issue is, it is a local option tax. Paragraph 5 adds to it, so.
It does say subsection, a 1% tax on non-owner occupied. So, it is, I mean, I do think that people can be, should be getting themselves educated, speaking of making sure that voters know what they're voting on, people should actually look at that. However, having said that, there are typos in Article 6. Just, it says Community Police Advisory Review Board. It should be policing. Do we care? Do we? I mean, it would be nice if it said policing, both time, there are.
That is a typo? We can correct that.
Yeah, it's on the next to the last and the last line.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, which we didn't catch before. Sorry.
Yes, last comment. And thank you all for coming tonight and people that are watching, the best way to have your voice heard is to vote, so make sure you vote.
Do you want to make the motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Tucker.
Any more discussion on the hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hopefully you'll stay for the rest of the meeting, but the public hearing part is over. All right. So, next up, let's give people a moment to leave. And thank you to both interpreters for coming tonight.
Thank you, Chief. I was hoping you'd do that.
Okay. All right. So, the next thing is, all right, next up is the consent agenda, and I think it might make most sense to break it out. Do we want to do first the minutes of January 2nd, 11, and 13, and then we'll take the minutes of January 6th? Does that work? So, pull out the 6th, which is the vicious dog hearing, but do the other three?
Thanks, Mona.
Okay. So, okay, so we have revised minutes for January 2nd, and then we have the minutes for the 11th and the 13th. Anything on those three? So, the January 2nd minutes are, this is an expanded version. I have a concern about one or two of the sentences. I think it would be cleaner to just do them all separate because I'm abstaining to the 11th. Okay, let's start with the January 2nd minutes. All right. So, we're just, let's see, could I, for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 2nd? Second? All right. I have in, on the 1, 2, 3, fourth line that starts with Adams Facebook page, that's that line. I think there are two things that I'm concerned about. One, I think because we've named the Facebook page, I think we need to name it correctly. So, it should say Adams Facebook Page. Clark, tell me if this isn't right. Talk to Select Board Member colon C. period Adams with your concerns. That's the name of the page. And then a period after that. And then the next sentence, E. Woods didn't think it appropriate for personal, family, and friend attack, blah, blah, blah. I don't think that, well, I'm quite sure the issue was not whether it was appropriate. The issue was that it violated the town's social media policy.
That was the intention.
That, and.
I am of the opinion that it violated the policy, correct?
So, I think probably that sentence should say that E. William, E., whatever your name is, E. Woods noted that allowing personal, family, and friends attacks to be posted and remain posted on a Select Board Member's personal page violated the social media policy. And that, and then that makes sense in terms of why we then read the social media policy.
Thank you.
So, that would be my suggestion, just to clarify that.
I have nothing else. I have nothing else.
Okay. Anyone? If that's the only, then are we ready to vote then? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's including your changes?
Yes, including the changes.
I'll vote aye.
Okay. All those voting no? All those abstaining?
I'm abstaining, Sarah Perrin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one down, three to go. Next, we have the, okay, next are the, could I have a motion to accept the minutes from the vicious dog hearing on January 6th?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can we change the word on line 22 from such actions are considered repetitive, they were prohibited? One of those rhymes with... Prohibited by the animal care. Anything else? All right, ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, Jean.
Okay. I had to leave before the end of the hearing.
All right, next, could I have a motion for the January 11th budget meeting minutes?
So moved.
Sarah second? Tom, did you just second it?
Tom seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining, Sarah Perrin.
Okay, thank you.
Abstaining because I left the table and was not functioning as a select board member during part of the discussion about the library.
Okay, so two abstentions. All right, and then the minutes of January 13th. Have a motion to, for the, considering these minutes?
For the purposes of discussion, I move that we accept the minutes.
Thank you. Is it second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes?
Page 13?
Yes.
Line 44?
Line 444?
444, sorry.
Yep.
We were talking about the tennis bubble, and I said we didn't get a copy of the lease, and I also learned that the town has not paid any rent, I think that should be included.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting language change here?
Yeah.
Did you say it?
Well, under 447, it says there were no objections. I asked if our town was paid rent each year by the group, and the answer was no. So I'd like that added in, we do not receive rent.
Did you say that at the time, is what I'm asking?
I asked the question, do we receive any rent? Stu said no.
Okay, so you want to add that you asked the question, so...
Does our town receive rent?
Ms. White?
From the group.
Receive rent. Okay. And the answer's no, okay. All right. And then there were no objections because we didn't have to vote on it. Okay. So with that amendment, are we ready to vote? All those in, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining, Sarah Perrin.
Thank you. Okey-dokey. All right, so let's move on to the warrants and the licenses.
Can we leave those together?
Yes, we can do those together, I think. Any questions on the warrants or the liquor licenses?
For the purpose of discussion, I'd move that we accept the warrant and the liquor licenses as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes?
Pleasantly surprising, so the town does not have...
Can you take us to a line number?
Oh, yes.
Turn my microphone on here, too. So that would be item number 402504.
What page, H?
And that would be page 7. And concurrent, that also would be 402577.
77, okay.
And in terms of bulk fuel, do, the town does not maintain its own fuel pump or fueling station, or do we just buy our fuel directly from the Stewart Station?
No, this is the bulk filling that occurred.
Okay.
Stewart's a purchase, the vendor that we were normally dealing with, so.
Okay.
You're now the owner of that company.
Okay, all right, I was confused by where we were going, pulling up to the pump, I'd never seen any town vehicles there, so I was wondering what was going on, thank you.
Great question, so that's why it says bulk feeling, and it would have been a really big tank. Yeah, $11,000, okay.
Doesn't, doesn't, sometimes it costs me $11,000 to fill my tank.
Wow. That's great. Okay. All right, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank goodness we got through the warrants, okay. And the consent agenda, all right. Next up is public comment. Heavens, all right. And we have several people wanting to speak. Will Greer gets to go, yes, and Torrance reminded me to ask, Will, we're going to have you go first because you're on your way up north, yes?
Yes, I am, yes, I am, here, let me just get this all pulled up, okay. Will Greer, Bennington. So I'm just going to give the three-minute update about everything that's been going on in Montpelier. So the first main one was the governor's education proposal, I'm sure many of you may have watched it, read about it in the paper. The two big changes that was proposed in that was 52 supervisor unions that we currently have would be consolidated to five regional districts. So right now, SBSU, as we know it, would become essentially Rutland and Bennington County, so we would be about, I think it was 11,000 students in that regional district under the plan. He still does preserve elements of local school district, but there would be, oh, you can't hear me? Lower, lower, sorry. Closer, okay. But we would still have limited decision-making and policy and budget choices at the local school district level, but we will find out more details in February about that. We finally got a little more clarity on the foundation formula, we don't have a number yet, but it seems like that there will be parameters on excess spending and making sure that our kids are getting an equitable education across the state, which actually will bring us in compliance with Brigham for the first time in a while. I'll just note as well, in talking about the governor, I've been a part of a working group of lawmakers, a bipartisan group, that we're trying to address the raise the age concern, and also repeat offenders, because as the governor mentioned, and our Public Safety Commissioner also noted, there's a very small but active and dangerous group of people that are causing issues in our community. I want to say the number floated was about 50 around the state, but still, that's a major concern, it may be more, it may be less, but there's definitely people that we need to make sure that our laws are addressing. I'll give a committee update as well, Treasurer Pete Check came in, he delivered us the new bond rating, so we are still at a AA+ bond rating, that's good for Bennington, because now if we ever need to go out and bond, we can get it for a lower interest rate. We also discussed the pre-trial supervision program that came before our committee regarding the DOC, choosing people that are qualified to be supervised in the committee while they are awaiting trial, and those people qualify for bail, so this is something that we're hoping will have a positive impact on public safety as we address bail reform issues. And I'll just highlight a few bills, I don't know what my time's like, but there's one bill that, you know, I am still reading over, and I want to hear from the community at large on, but it's H54, and it's a cell phone free schools bill. I'd be curious to learn more about that. And there's also a few others that have come through, I think we're at about 100 bills so far in the legislature. There's a bunch of healthcare conservation bills, a few immunization bills that have come up, so if there's anything that, you know, gets on your mind, just let me know, and I'll answer any questions you have. And if you'd like to sign up for the newsletter, where I go in a little bit more depth about some of these issues, you can go find my website and email me, or just email me through my legislative account. So thank you all so much, and I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you. And Will, just because you won't be here, probably at the end when we usually respond, definitely reach out to the SBSU, they've had excellent, excellent response to cell phone free schools.
Okay, perfect.
They're a great model. Okay. So, because I forgot to say it, please keep your comments to three minutes, and you'll get a, you'll get a handy-dandy warning at two and a half, and please be civil, and also, if you, if you want to address anything that's on the agenda, please wait until that agenda item comes up. All right, next, Jason Frederiksen, Ideas into Action.
Good evening. Jason Frederiksen, Bennington, Vermont. Good evening, Select Board Members, Town Employees, and Members of our remarkable community, thank you for allowing me the privilege to speak. I stand here tonight deeply concerned. Our Select Board and Town Government have been making headlines repeatedly, not for reasons we can be proud of, but for reasons that highlight division and dysfunction. At the same time, it's encouraging though, to see so many people speaking up at meetings, engaging in discussions, and showing that this community truly cares about its future. The words and actions of our elected leaders in these meetings, in public and online, should inspire confidence and motivate others to serve. Select Board Members are entrusted with the power to lead through our votes, and they carry the responsibility to represent and unite. Local government is built on ordinary people doing extraordinary things, volunteering time and energy to improve the lives of everyone in our community. Right now, however, what we are seeing is division, not unity. The time for change is now. Local government should be about turning ideas into action and making things happen. This March, our town has an important opportunity, three open seats on the Select Board. This is a pivotal election, and with so many candidates running, it's vital for all of us to take this seriously. I urge you to do your homework, research the candidates, attend events, come to the Select Board Candidate Forum, and most importantly, show up informed. Restoring confidence in our local government starts with us. I want leaders on the Select Board who support fair and equal treatment for everyone, who can govern with professionalism, efficiency, and respect, and who will work collaboratively to make this town better, stronger, and more prosperous. The elections have real consequences. This is a chance to set our community on a better path, so please make your voice heard and vote on Tuesday, March 4th. To all of our Select Board Candidates, good luck in the upcoming election, thank you for stepping up and for your willingness to serve. With gratitude and respect, thank you for all for your time and for your service to this town.
Thank you, Jason. Jenny Duer, social media-ish.
Also, just to clarify, for short-term rentals, once you go over 30 days, you are officially a landlord. That's the law.
Okay.
I start with a haiku. Local elections, be responsible, vote, then, community wins. There are a number of conspiracy pages and profiles on Facebook with multiple aliases, all leading back to the same person who works downtown and thrives on trying to create chaos in the town. The regurgitation of much of those rumors and gossip demonstrated by a certain declared candidate for your Select Board is unbecoming and inappropriate. It is not fitting for anyone who wishes to serve the public to behave in such a manner as slandering community members. I felt for Susan Plissant when she spoke at the last meeting. Her treatment was disgusting, inaccurate, and undeserved. Whether you like her or not, she gives tirelessly to this community. Targeting her stems from the aforementioned shop clerk's bitter jealousy over the official recognition of the BBC by the state downtown organization. Not only does the BBC have their mission to serve downtown, but they are essential to the designation of Bennington as one of the 24 towns that are eligible for specific grants because of that recognition. Back to the candidate, they also wrote about me, conjecturing why I was, quote, "let go" from the BBC well over a year ago. While it is absolutely no one's business but mine, my departure was both nuanced and complicated. I initiated the separation due to burnout and the need to focus on my own business, my independent contractor work as a property manager, and my freelance work. I ultimately learned that the not-for-profit world and the necessary bureaucracy involved was not really my jam. I would like to think I made a positive difference during my tenure, but honestly, I am happier and more fulfilled working for myself despite it being much more of a challenge financially. The timing was not optimum, but the way it worked out ultimately was the best, as it allowed me the time and energy to focus on arranging my beautiful brother's memorial service, my only sibling, leaving me as the last person in my childhood nuclear family. It was an absolutely heartbreaking time for me, and for it to still be fodder for gossip is unacceptable. So no, I was not let go as a result of a completely unrelated incident that took place well over a year prior to my moving on. So to you keyboard warriors, the Joe Crickets, the Elon Musks of Bennington, who must get pathetically giddy on meeting nights, have a field day on Facebook. But to the candidate, knock it off, Maria.
Marianne, do not get up, do not get up, I'm sorry.
I am not going to defend that, I don't need to.
No, you don't. Next up, yep. Next up is Robin Tarnas. Robin Tarnas?
Yes.
All right, and invitation to the new trail.
Yes. My name is Robin Tarnas, I'm, I live in Bennington, and Bennington has a long history of using its natural resources to improve the quality of life around here. And over the last 20 years, there have been new parks that have been added to the town, including the Headwaters Park and the Greenberg Reserve. The state has also bought land when it was considering building a southern bypass, and there is a process going on to transfer that land to the town. And some of us have been working to extend the trail system in Bennington to include these parks. So this is an invitation to everyone on the Select Board, to all-town management, and to the general public. We will go for a walk, starting from Main Street, and walk along town land designated that is your land now, and along a trail that will go from Main Street just across from the Ben High, we'll meet at the Ben High parking lot, go through the cemetery, the Headwaters Park, along the trail of, that was the area that could have been used for the bypass, and end up at the Greenberg Reserve. It's about a little more, two and a half miles, which will greatly extend the trail system in Bennington. And we'll go at a very relaxed pace, so anybody can join us, it'll take less than two hours. And I will recommend that when we do this, people dress appropriately because it's winter in Vermont. So we will leave on February the 8th at 1:00, and you're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, say again exactly where people should meet?
The Ben High parking lot.
Okay.
So that's right on Main Street, and...
The old Ben High? Yes, okay.
Yes. The, I think, don't we distinguish that, that's Ben High as opposed to the Bennington High School, but yes, the old Ben High.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. All right. Mona Gothier, misinformation, what is it?
Mona Gothier, Bennington, Vermont. I've been to several of the meetings, and I've seen where people, board members, have gone to make a statement or ask a question, and they're told it's misinformation, and there's been all kinds of stuff in the banner, and so, it's always stated misinformation. So what is the misinformation exactly that's being misrepresented? Anybody know? What, just what is it, when a board member makes a statement and is cut off, and is told... When a board member makes a statement and is cut off, and is told it's misinformation, we don't need to address it now? The public doesn't know what the misinformation is. So, is it misrepresentation? Or is it your opinion that it's misrepresentation? Is it information that is true or false? I think we have a right to know, especially since we elected the board members, and they're a working part of your body. And they're outnumbered, and they're shut down, and I don't think it's right.
Thank you, Mona. So, at the conclusion, we responded to Will because he had to leave to drive north, but at the end of all the public comments, then we'll try and go back through, okay? And answer questions. Tortis, I saw your hand go up, so please, come up and introduce yourself.
Tortis Sisselhart, Bennington. You pulled the list when I got here, so that's why. Ironically, I have a statement about voting. The town meeting voting for 2025 will be on Tuesday, March 4th, four, five weeks from tomorrow. Bennington voting will be here in the firehouse in North Bennington, it will be at the village offices, in the old fire station, both between 9:00, 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Here are some next steps. One, decide now that you will vote, so that our town turnout can be higher than the 27% of our approximately 10,000 registered voters that it was last year. Two, if you plan to vote in person, decide when during the day you'll vote, how you'll get there, perhaps riding with or driving someone else. Three, you might want to vote with an absentee mail-in ballot. If so, request one to be sent to you by the Bennington Town Clerk, or pick one up from the town offices. Early voting starts February 14th. You can mail your ballot back, put it in the drop box at the town offices before 4:30 p.m. on March 3rd, or bring it in person to the firehouse on the 4th, if you missed a cutoff. There are many important items on the ballot. I want to focus on the election of three candidates to join Sarah, Ed, Nancy, and Clark for a full Select Board of seven members. As of this morning, nine candidates had filed papers, including Tom Haley, who is running for reelection. The three candidates who get the highest number of votes will be elected. Four, before Town Meeting Day, use opportunities to find out which candidates you want to tackle what you think are the most critical issues facing our community. Hear what they promised in candidate-sponsored material, phone calls, emails, and both formal and informal meetups, in Banner and Vermont Digger articles, and in conversations with friends, neighbors, and family, share what you're learning. Five, attend the Candidate Forum, scheduled for Monday, February 17th at 6:00 p.m., co-sponsored by The Banner and Cat TV, at the Bennington Theater. It will be both live-streamed and recorded to watch later. To be most productive, the Select Board needs to work as a team, both supporting and supported by the town staff and the town's many boards and commissions. Candidate forums give us a chance to see how they respond to questions and how they interact with each other. One or more additional forums are likely to be announced after any last-minute candidates have submitted their papers by 4:30 today. The final list of candidates for 2025 will be available on the town website and will certainly be published in The Banner and Vermont Digger. For everyone's sake, thank you for making it your business to vote and to encourage others to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tortis. Anyone else that we grabbed the paper before you got a chance to sign up? Yes, Deb, go ahead. Or even if, even if the paper was there. All right, and I see some, Erin, I see you in the back, too. Okay, all right, so, okay, we have several more.
Debbie Matt, Bennington. This is kind of for Jack. I was curious if...
It can only, it's, so this is not question-and-answer time. This is, you can make a statement?
Okay. I'm curious if the policies that President Trump is implementing is affecting Jack's program of helping the Afghans that he helps.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Erin, did I, who'd I see? Yeah, yeah, Erin, come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hello, Erin Williams, Bennington resident, and I'm here as an organizer for the Bennington Community Cafe, and I'm getting my phone out so I know the dates are right, because we just picked them. Okay. So, the Bennington Community Cafe will be hosting three information sessions, which is really, it's going to be an information table, on February 15th, 22nd, and March 1st, with information about what Town Voting Day is and how to register to vote in Bennington, Vermont. So, if you would like more information, please come to one of the cafe sessions on those dates and learn more. Thank you.
Can you tell us where the cafe sessions are?
Perhaps, perhaps I could do that. Every Saturday from 1:30 to 3:00, the Bennington Community Cafe has a pop-up, pay-what-you-choose restaurant, which is run out of St. Peter's Episcopal Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Yes, Zarhuna, either one.
Hello, everyone. Maybe I will take more than three minutes, because I have some pain or some problems or challenges we face during the new administration. I want to express it to you. Dear member of Bennington Select Board and member of the Bennington community, as a legal refugee and a member of Bennington, Vermont community, I would like to express my concerns regarding the condition refugee face, especially because of recent changes in federal policy. The Afghan government, the Afghan government was established and supported by the United Nations and the U.S. government, the United Nations and U.S. government. After 20 years, however, the government collapsed, following the decision by the United Nations and U.S. soldiers to leave Afghanistan. During the U.S. presence in Afghanistan, many individuals assisted the U.S. government in the successful implementation of its mission across various sectors. Afghan helped the U.S. government both directly and indirectly. Those who worked directly, such as interpreters and employees, who achieved special immigrant visa, SIV status, were recognized, were recognized, as well as those who worked indirectly and were granted P-1 and P-2 status. In many cases, those who worked indirectly supported the mission more significantly than the direct employees. I would like to share my personal experience. I worked as a high-ranking government employee in Afghanistan with experience in various fields. The U.S. Embassy in Afghanistan frequently changed its economic officers, with new ones arriving every three to four months. When new officer arrived, they were often concerned about Afghan culture, community, community connection, and economic project implementation. I was always there to assist them. Even, even I never refused to help when I was directly under treat from the Taliban. The previous officer, before leaving, always introduced me to the new officers, saying, "Do not worry, there is a lady named Zarhuna. She will help you." Despite this danger, I faced, I was always there to assist the U.S. government. I helped to bridge the gap between high-ranking Afghan government official and the U.S. Embassy. I facilitated connection between ministers, parliament members, and the embassy. The critical role led to my being granted P-1 status, and I arrived in the U.S. on February 29th, 2024. However, my children, who are over 21 years old, are still in the third country awaiting reunification. The new administration, suspension of refugee arrival, has had a negative impact on all Afghans who supported the U.S. government. On April 20, 2019, the Taliban attacked the Ministry of Telecommunication and the Afghanistan Regulatory Authority, where I was working. The Taliban entered the building, and a fierce battle began. The Taliban killed anyone who came into their path, and seven employees were killed and more than 10 employees were injured. We collected employees in a security room, but the fighting continued for hours, from 10 o'clock until 3:30 or 4 o'clock p.m. We were trapped inside the building, hearing gunfire and explosions, with no hope for survival. Our families called us, but we told them, "Not worry, as our food batteries were died." After a long and terrifying ordeal, the police were able to open a route from the back of the building, allowing us to escape. Boiler and containers, a bomb explored near to us, but we were again fortunate to survive. Despite these dangers, I continued to support the U.S. government. I survived gunfire, exclusion, and constant treats to my life, but I never stopped helping. In August 2021, the Taliban took control of Afghanistan once again. My family and I had to flee, just like many others Afghans who had supported the U.S. government. Over 100,000 Afghans sought refugee in neighboring countries such as Pakistan, Iran, Turkey, Tajikistan, and India. However, these countries are not refugee-host countries, and they pressured Afghans to leave. As a result, many are still in limbo in these countries, awaiting the completion of their SIV, P-1, P-2, or parole visa processes. They cannot return to Afghanistan, and the countries where they are currently residing are attempting to send them back, putting their lives at great risk. I am not the only resident of Bennington, waiting to be reunited with family members stranded in dangerous situation overseas. Thousands of Afghan refugees are in desperate situation, including my children. I urge you, all of community leaders, to support refugees. It is crucial to help reunite families. Afghans who supported the U.S. government and refugees from around the world who are seeking safety need your help now more than ever. Please do everything you can, encourage the United States to reopen its doors to refugees, especially those who put their life on the line to support this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Zarhuna. And Deb, I think that somewhat answers your question, but, you know, definitely follow up. Yes, please, come on up, Suzanne.
Suzanne Kirkpatrick, I am the president of AAUW Bennington. I wanted to announce what has just been all confirmed today, that we will be having a Candidate Forum on February 26th, right here at 7 o'clock.
26th, okay.
Very hard act to follow.
Thank you very much. So, it will be February 26th here at what time?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay. Anyone else? Yes, Shershah.
I am, like, my name is Shershah. I am one of the Bennington residents. I came with United States government, our United States government bring us four or three and a half years ago to United States. But right now, one of the Bennington residents, I'm still concerned about if I face with ICE police in the community, what will happen? I am legally in this country, and I help many refugees in this community. With all of these, it's still, I'm concerned about this. And also, I would like to know what will be our Select Board and community's support for this, because with all of the refugees I talked, they, all of them is concerned, and they have a fear, because some of them is a fear if we have a small violation with, like, traffic stop or some things, or some of them is still a fear if I have not any things in my background, if I face with ICE police or other police in this area or community, what will be my futures? I would like to know our Select Board and community's support for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? All right, and I, you know, I appreciate everyone that spoke tonight. We had quite a variety of comments. And I know the Police Department is giving their quarterly update next. I do think the individual that asked about misinformation, that probably is something we can address right now. The others, I think, we probably can't give you, we can give you individual answers, but we can't give you sort of a board or a town statement at this point. I will take a stab at misinformation, and I will encourage my fellow board members to, to share their thoughts as well. Misinformation is dangerous because it is misinformation. It's not true information, it's not accurate, it's not factual. And so, it is something that we want to, we want to try to keep information going out to the public as factually correct as we possibly can, because we make much better decisions when we have good information. So, when information that is clearly, factually inaccurate begins to be stated, we do try and stop it, whether that's coming from the community, we try and correct it. If it's coming from the Select Board, we try and prevent it from being said, because misinformation is dangerous. An example tonight was someone saying that this was the first time that the public and the Select Board had ever seen the warning for the amendments to the Charter, to the Charter, which was inaccurate. So, try and stop that information before information that is going to possibly make it more difficult for someone to make a decision to do that. So, that's, I guess, that's my two cents on misinformation. No, no, so, so, public here, the public comment is over at this point, so all we're doing at this point is, we are trying to address anything that came up that we can address.
Yeah, I just want to add to what Ginny said. That's why my reaction when you said that, I was getting the distinct feeling that you had learned how that happened, I don't know, that you had, someone had said that there seemed to have been a coordinated...
No.
Okay, don't, you don't need to get back and forth, just let me speak. Okay, that's great, because I made the assumption that it's out there on Facebook, and it's spreading around, and it, you know, and I just, I have very little patience for people that stand there, and you weren't, you didn't do this, say, "I read on Facebook." Okay, so that's great. But I believe very strongly that it is an important job that, as a Select Board member, we have got to fight back against misinformation. It takes on a life of its own, as you all know. And if we don't call it out every single time it happens, we're shirking our responsibility for educating the public. So, I do believe that we probably could do a better job, instead of just saying maybe a more blanket statement, you know, "That's misinformation," to get more specific, to educate the public exactly what piece of information was just said... educate the public exactly what piece of information was just said that is inaccurate. I think we probably could do a better job of doing that. The last thing I want to say is, it's really not pleasant to have to tell someone that what they just said is a lie. It doesn't feel good, but we have to do it, whether it's someone that we're sitting with at this table, or it's someone in the public, we have got to do it. I really believe the country is in the state of this, of division. I think misinformation and the spreading of misinformation going unchecked is a huge part of the reason why we are, why we're where we are today. And I, for one, will never stop pointing out when someone says something that's inaccurate. We can disagree, but if you don't start with accurate factual information, it's never going to be a good, you're not going to end up in a good place.
Let me follow that. Let me, let me follow that if I could. We are bound by Vermont Open Meeting Law as well, which means that this board takes up agenda items that have been publicly warned. If an item comes up that is not publicly warned, it is something that needs to be tabled for future discussion. Oftentimes, things are brought up again after they have been discussed and decided. I think that we may often be sharing our frustration with the public that we can't discuss in any depth anything that was not warned legally in advance of the meeting. I think that's an important part of this.
That's not considered misinformation, please.
We can't have a back and forth, Mona, that would be against, against as well.
So anyone else on the select board want to move to this topic?
Yes, please.
If a board member says to another board member, "False information, misinformation," then that board member should be able to provide the correct information. It doesn't do any good just to say, "Oh, that's wrong." Provide the correct information at that time, so there is a record.
Very good point. Anyone else?
All right, so, go ahead.
So this is not exactly on your topic, but there are three seats coming up, and I just encourage you to talk to each person that you're considering voting for, actually all of them. Talk to them, see how you, you know, see where you're voting, instead of just looking at Facebook or talking to somebody else. I encourage you.
Can you comment to this?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I just, a lot of people do their research. I actually am guilty of that myself. So I encourage everyone to talk, talk to people in person, see what their thoughts are, and make their informed choices that way. And that had nothing to do with this conversation, but I just wanted to get that out there to people on TV as well.
Okay, all right, so we are moving on from public comment, and the police chief has been very, very patiently waiting. We have our quarterly report, and we have Chief Paul Doucette with us, and thank you very, very much for being here. Oh, and special guests!
We have, for all of you, you know, we, sometimes we find ourselves in situations where we want to try to be positive, and sometimes things turn negative. But I can assure you, we're going to start out very positive here tonight on the Police Department Quarterly Report. So entering the room is Officer McCauley, our newest K-9 handler, and K-9 Officer Stark. And I wanted Stark to come in and announce to all of you and to the community that K-9 Stark has officially graduated from the Vermont Police Academy. He graduated back in the end of December, and we have put Stark to work, and he loves to come to work. Even though he's the younger generation, he loves to come to work! And we're, we're super excited. He, and all kidding aside, I said it three times, yeah, he does, he does like to work. So the bottom line is, is we brought him here today so all of you could see him. He's, he's still very young and impressionable, and that's why we're not going to let him loose in the room, so that you can pet him. But I can assure you that Officer McCauley has him under control, and he's done some amazing work for us in the last month. And so anyway, I just wanted to introduce Stark to all of you. We all got to see him when he was a puppy, and, and now you can see him ready to, ready to go out and find lost people, and find articles, and, you know, help us with our drug issues, and he is just absolutely amazing, and, and we, we already love him. Jim, anything you want to add?
Um, just Mr.
Oh, sorry, you got to come here, sorry.
I just wanted to say, so far, he's been deployed about 10 times in about the month and a half, two months that we've been on the road total. Couple tracking ones, and mostly drug detection. We actually have two more drug detection ones tonight, but he already has a fine for a runaway juvenile, which is pretty cool.
You're saying you boost him, the woman that, like, definitely be on, otherwise he left.
No, he just, he's just very excitable, but his tail was wagging, he's just very excitable, and, and he's looking around this room saying, "My, my boss," which is not really, because, uh, doesn't bring him into, into big rooms filled with people, because we're still learning that. And, you know, he comes into the office now, and, and he knows his place, he goes right to his little bed where, where Jim puts him down, and, but this is, this is new to him, coming into a room like this. I was excited to see what was going to happen, and he doesn't bark very often until tonight, so.
This is one of the first times, this is the first time he's been around this many people for about, like, six months since he was really young. So he's got to get, get back used to it again.
So, but anyway, we wanted to start off positive, so I hope that you're all happy to see Stark.
That's great.
Love these guys.
Yay, thank you.
He does like women, though, don't worry about that. So, so, anyway, all right, so we started with that. I have a few things that I'd love to go over with you. I know that you guys are running a little bit behind, and I want to share with you that my left-hand Lieutenant Randy is ill, and that does not happen very often, and so he's not here with me tonight to stand behind me, or, actually, we had told him that it was his turn tonight, because I always get up here and talk for way too long, and so it was his opportunity to come and start this presentation tonight. So I want to just go over a couple things with all of you. As you know, we started Project Alliance a couple of years ago, bringing together some community groups and having some collaboration and having lots of meetings. The governor came down, and we've been working with our state partners and our federal partners, and Project Alliance continues under the direction of law and return from the United Counseling Service, and we're still attending those meetings on a regular basis. And then the next project that we started was BENSTAT. It's a data-driven project where we, we look at our stats. Lieutenant Randy and Communications Coordinator Krosick work with BENSTAT, again, working with our community partners and collaborating, looking at different data, and, and those meetings take place now about 30 minutes prior to our newest project, which is the Situation Table. Many of you have heard about the Situation Table. We had a two-day training right here at the firehouse, and we have, in the Situation Table, we're, we're bringing information forward with our community partners for people that, that need assistance, whether the rescue squad brings the names forward, or the Police Department, or the hospital, or the SVSU, and we're looking for ways to interact with people, to get them the assistance that they need, so that we all, as agencies, have less interaction with these people, and we get them the help that they need, instead of calling, as an example, instead of calling the Police Department, looking for the rescue squad three times a day, or situations like that. So we're working collaboratively to, to get people assistance. Right now, the Situation Table is up and running. We are actually working on three active cases that have been accepted. So what happens is, we bring people together, our partners, we, we present stats, we, we look at names of people, which I will not be sharing with all of you, and, and we, we look and see what can be done, which groups, which community partner can come to a table and provide guidance and assistance to folks. And those people all sit at the table, proper notes are taken, action steps are taken, while others move to another table. And then we all get back together after we develop a plan. So right now, we do have three active folks that we're working on. And when you look at this, BENSTAT is designed so we're really dealing with Bennington. The Situation Table is unique in the sense that we have folks that come to Bennington, that land in Manchester or land in Arlington, and they're not here. And that doesn't mean that they don't need assistance. So we're actively working with, for example, the Manchester Police Department attends, Lieutenant Coop from the Shasbury barracks, he attends meetings, so that we can all understand the people that we're working with, because whether it's the police, or the rescue squad, or the hospital, just because they're not from Bennington doesn't mean that they don't need help. But collaboratively, we can get the Department of Health, for example, to provide services, or the SVSU to help us provide services if people move from Bennington to Arlington, or vice versa, or from Powell to North Bennington. So it really is working for us. Lieutenant Randy is, is far better at explaining all of this than I am, but in, in a short version, based on time, I would love to have Lieutenant Randy come back here. Again, we're not going to release names to any of you, whether you're on the select board or within the community, but there are already some, some success stories, and, and it's great, because we don't just meet here at the firehouse, we don't just meet at Bennington College, you know? We are, we are meeting in different areas and encompassing a lot of community support for folks that, that need that. So I hope that, I hope that gets you all to understand that the Police Department, just as talking about the police, the Police Department isn't here just to go out and arrest people and not give people guidance. We are, we are trying our best to give people guidance, and if it doesn't work for us, then we can call upon UCS, the hospital, SVSU, or, or what have you. So it's a team approach in all of these projects that we're doing. So let me, let me drive forward just a little bit.
Chief, chief, can I just ask?
I'm sorry.
Can you talk a little bit more about BENSTAT, about what that is? You talked, you gave us a very good understanding of Situation Table, but just what kind of data BENSTAT, you're collecting for BENSTAT, or what the purpose is?
Yeah, so, so, for, for BENSTAT, you know, we're, we're, we're collecting, so, I don't know if I really want to, well, I'm going to, you know, like, high-frequency users of the Bennington Rescue Squad, people that are calling the rescue squad for things that you don't need a rescue squad, you don't need to be transported to the emergency room, trying to get people to have a primary care doctor, instead of using the emergency room as a primary care facility, and things like that. So we're, we're looking at the number of rescue squad calls, we're looking at interaction with, with law enforcement, perhaps maybe due to substance abuse and things like that, and where we turn to our partners at Turning Point, we love the folks at Turning Point, I should say, we love all of our community partners, but the, the folks at Turning Point really can provide people with assistance that we can't provide. Perhaps, I, I can't have somebody, you know, go off to rehab, maybe, whereas I can go to Turning Point, call upon them, and they have the connections and the contacts to get someone off to a rehabilitation facility, perhaps. And, and it's, so again, we can make referrals, we can have them come out and work with us, but we're looking at the stats to see, you know, high-frequency users, identifying them, getting them to sign a waiver, so that we can talk to other community groups and get them the assistance that, that they need. And again, BENSTAT's all data-driven. It's, it's not like, okay, we, we just dealt with Paul Doucette, and he was drunk again, and, you know, it's, it's data-driven, it's, it's, it's multiple visits by rescue, by police, multiple visits to the hospital, and, and trying to get people, if it's, it doesn't have to be rehab, it could simply be this person needs a new place to live, and helping them find an apartment, or someone that can give them guidance, so that they can get back on their feet. Okay? You're very welcome. So I want to just, I, I took it upon myself to, I want to share some information with you. Over in 2024, it's, I know it's year end, and this is a quarterly report, but I want you all to understand what we're doing. We sat through some community policing advisory review board meetings, we've, we've been to select board meetings where people come in and talk about speeding on their street, and then there's a lack of response from the Police Department. So I want to share with you, in 2023, as far as traffic enforcement goes, we, we did issue 1,403 traffic tickets. We listened to the community, we listened to the, the folks that were concerned about traffic violations in their community. In 2024, we issued 2,149 tickets, an increase of 746. So I think that's important for you to understand. But on the flip side, there's also the warning category, where some folks do receive a warning. In 2023, it was 1,326, in 2024, it was 1,948, for a difference of 622. So we do listen to the community, we listen to your concerns about traffic safety, and, and I think my, my people really got it together and did great work in 2024 to, to respond to the community's needs. You know, 2023, we had 12,903 incidents, in 2024, we had 13,983. Not that I really wanted to hit 14, but it's a lot easier to say 14,000. A difference of 1,080 incidents increase. I also want to go backwards for a second, you know, we've been on these 12-hour shifts now for almost a year, and, and I think that has motivated the officers, because they are working the 12-hour shifts, and they, one day they work four days, the next, I'm sorry, one week they work four days, the next week they work three, and, and it really has, seems to have rejuvenated some of the folks. So we're, we're pushing for that, and, you know, I just wanted to share those numbers with you, because I, I thought it was necessary to let the community know that we are responsive.
Can I ask a quick question, right here? What's your definition of an incident?
Incidents are things that we are called to, whether it be a criminal offense, or an assist to the rescue squad, an assist to the fire department, there's a whole slew of things that, that we respond to. So anytime we generate police response, an incident is generated, and we, we document where we're going, what we're doing, and what happened.
Okay, so it's kind of like everything except a traffic stop?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Some of the traffic stops, traffic stops do require incidents, and we do document offenses, violations, and things like that as well, so. So with, with that being said, I would like to move to a special project that we're working on at the Police Department. I'm, I'm hoping that this is an appropriate time to talk about a failure at the Police Department, a double failure which could turn to a catastrophic failure. Our failure involves the communications system at the Bennington Police Department. So let me give you a little background on this. When we moved into the Bennington Police Department years ago, the chief at the time, Richard Gotheer, was able to find federal funding to replace our communications equipment at the Police Department. Approximately 10 years ago, same, same pot of money, different pot of money, but same, same source through the federal government, we were able to replace the two consoles at the Bennington Police Department to the tune of approximately $150,000. Those funds came to us through a Homeland Security grant, and we were able to replace the console, I'm sorry, two consoles. With that being said, we have had two failures of our console now in the last month and a half. We have had our provider Bearcom come, and we are back up and running by taking parts from a console that we have on the first floor of the facility, and we are operational at this time. That console is running off Windows 7 and is way behind the times. And we, we have had as many repairs done as we possibly can, a, to replace the consoles at the Police Department at this time, we did not budget funds, because the consoles were up and running, and we anticipated that these consoles would last approximately 12 and a half years. They have lasted approximately 10 and a half years. Again, purchased with, with Homeland Security funds. So at this time, we have been working vigorously with our provider Bearcom and Motorola to replace the consoles. Remember, we dispatch police, fire, rescue, public works, and others out of the Bennington Police Department. The total cost to replace the consoles at this time in 2025, $232,000, actually $233,000 if we're going to round up. With that being said, Stuart and Melissa, myself, Nick, Cam, our IT director and the lieutenant- Lieutenant, we've had lots of meetings with Bearcom, and we have gotten them through negotiations, and having our IT Director do some of the work, we were able to bring the cost down to that $233,000. So we are proposing, some of the funds come out of our repair line, which does not have a lot of money in it, and the rest come out of capital reserve funds. And I am going to ask, the Select Board has been briefed on this, and in talking with Melissa, our Finance Director, funds are available through the reserve accounts to replace this equipment. Does take approximately four weeks from the time we signed the agreement with Bearcom and Motorola to get that equipment in place. We are already running CAT 6 cables, we are already doing all the things that we need to do, and with the work of the IT Director and others that I've mentioned, we were able to trim the cost of this project by $26,000, which brought us to that other number, the $233 that I gave you. How were we able to do that? It's not in the sense of buying lesser equipment, it is in the sense that we have questioned, and I've learned a lot about communications in my previous project 10 years ago when we replaced these consoles, but working with Nick Cave, our IT Director, has been amazing. And we called out Motorola and other companies about the equipment that we were purchasing, and, you know, just like it's business. They buy equipment from vendors, they repackage it, and then they sell it. So when I say we called them out, it wasn't a debate, we just asked them simple questions, and then we learned that we could buy some of this equipment for far less money, same exact equipment, and so again, that's how we were able to save the $26,000. Bearcom knows that we're in a predicament, we've been using Bearcom since I've been on the police department, it used to be Caldwell's Communications, then it was bought out. They understand that we're in a little bit of a predicament, so the radio equipment and the consoles will all be installed under one install price, and we really need to move forward on this project and get our radio consoles replaced, up to date, and for the overall safety of the Bennington community. So at this point, Jeannie, I would really like it if the, or appreciate it, not like it, if the Select Board would give some consideration into making a motion to allow me to, or allow us to use the reserve account so that we can replace this equipment. Again, it's going to take four weeks from the time we place the order to get the equipment, and then we have to set the equipment, and I do not want a catastrophic failure at the police department and us to not be able to dispatch fire, rescue, and police. You can be upset with me, I was not aware that this equipment was failing, it just failed, we thought we had it fixed, it failed again, that goes into panic mode, and when you have to start stripping parts from other things to make it work, it's a problem. And Motorola, I'm not here to sell you on Motorola, that's the equipment that we have been using, that's the equipment that we need to replace, and I really do believe that we need to move forward on this project as quickly as possible to keep our consoles up and running. So I would entertain, or ask you to entertain a motion to allow us to use reserve accounts for this project.
And just to clarify, Town Manager included, a description of this in the manager's report, so anyone that wants to see it, and the, you know, there is a request for a motion there. It makes sense since the chief is here and we can ask any questions, but I think we, I am quite sure that none of us want to see a catastrophic failure of the equipment. So I would entertain a motion to authorize the release of funds necessary for this purchase.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Would the equipment come with the warranty or whatever that Motorola usually comes with?
Yes, it'll come with a warranty that's actually built into this. Originally, they tried to sell us a very long warranty, and we just don't, I just don't have the funds for that. But there is, there is the option to, this two-year warranty, there is an option to extend that out, as long as we do it prior to the warranty expiring. So that's something we can revisit once all the equipment is installed, and perhaps we look at fiscal year 2027.
Okay, thanks. I'm not one that believes in like extended warranties for equipment and stuff like that, I'm just hoping it comes with what it normally comes with.
Oh, yes, absolutely. The only thing, straight up, since you asked, I have to tell you, there was, we went back and forth on, so for example, we're going to purchase our own monitors, right, which is not part of the radio system itself, but we're going to purchase our own monitors and install our own monitors, because it was far less money for us to do that, and they wanted to let us know that those monitors wouldn't fall under their warranty. And that's perfectly fine, because the price of monitors has come down significantly compared to what it used to be. In fact, and that's something that, under the repair line, as an example, I mean, it would be under warranty if it failed, obviously, in the upcoming year, but that's something that we can think about, you know, in the future when we build fiscal year 2027.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great question. Anyone else?
Yes, Clark.
Hi. Always good to see you, Chief. My question is, I guess maybe a technical, you know, I'm a gadget guy. I know you dispatch for multiple organizations.
You do.
So this item that you're looking to purchase, it's completely compatible with all these other entities that you're interacting with? Have you had some sort of technical interface with them to make sure we don't have a pink elephant here?
That's an excellent question, Clark, and the answer is yes. We did a complete interface, we had Bearcom come and assess, we created diagrams, we're still going to be able to dispatch for rescue, we can still communicate with Public Works and the Sheriff's Department and the state police. And that's one of the things, not to digress from your question, I want you all to understand, you know, Stuart did direct me to work hard on this, for obvious reasons, and I called everybody that I knew, and I even called the Commissioner of Public Safety and said to Jen, I said, Jen, we found ourselves into a little bit of an issue here down in Bennington, she put me in touch with some folks, and there was no money available. One of the things that we were concerned about was, we wanted to make sure we were still going to be able to communicate with our state partners in all of this. And, you know, we are going to replace, obviously, with this console purchase, we're going to replace some of the radios, but everything that we're going to replace is going to be compatible with other agencies. So we're good.
Okay, and just an additional follow-up. So we're going to put this system in, do you have a backup, so to speak, with this system, or can we use your jury-reap system now as an absolute backup, or is that going out in the dumpster?
So, no. So what we've, haven't had a chance to find out where, but somewhere in this building, we are going to store some of the equipment that we're going to remove, because we do have a system here in the fire facility that has been replaced in the last couple of years, and we don't plan on throwing away everything. There are some parts that we're going to save for equipment that we have in this building. And so that's another good question. So we're not throwing out everything, just the stuff that we don't need to complete this changeover. Some of the stuff will be stored.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? I do want to note, the Town Manager's final sentence under the police department console discussion was, this is an excellent example of how reserves provide a factor of safety in emergencies. And definitely so, because I think this is much better than depleting what wouldn't have been enough money in your repair budget. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, questions from the public on this before we vote? Yes, Debbie, please come up.
Debbie Bennington, I want to make sure Stark's not being abused, and I didn't hear any talk about any biscuits when he's in the office.
Debbie, you're something else. I can assure you that Stark is not being abused. We have to follow, there's a new training concept at the academy, and we must follow that, and we are not allowed to give biscuits to Stark as the rank and file, I'll put it. Stark has to receive all of his treats from his canine handler, and that's the way the academy wants it, and that's the way we're going to do it. So there's a complete change at the police academy as far as canine training, but he's definitely not abused.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? Yeah? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I know that, I promised we would keep things a little bit shorter until I get my friend Lieutenant Grandy here. Just want, I just want to talk about one more thing, if you don't mind. So we've really been working hard following up with the loss of our amazing canine officer, Gracie. Tomorrow, there'll be canine interviews, and by the end of the week, we'll announce the handler for our newest dog. But tomorrow is a big day in the sense that I'm going to share with all of you now, we have a lot of things canine-related going on at the police department. We have generated funds, and we are working with a life scout, if you're familiar with scouting. We're working with a life scout, working towards the rank of Eagle Scout. He comes to us from the Theodore Roosevelt Council down in Franklin Square, New York. We have been working with him and his scoutmaster for months now on a canine training yard. All of these plans were in the works before we lost Gracie, and our plan is to build scent boxes, a wall jump, some tunnels, a balance beam, a window jump, and a confidence walk and climb, so that we can continue to train Stark and our newest canine, and also bring canine training here to Bennington for other officers in Bennington County, and perhaps even down in Massachusetts. So that project is at zero cost to the taxpayers here in Bennington, and we have been fundraising for that. And we did not announce all of the details on this, because last week, I was able to meet with the scout, review the project, and sign off on that. So we're very pleased to have interaction with Scouts of America, and you just heard what I said, it's no longer the Boy Scouts of America, it's Scouts of America. And we're very proud to be working with a life scout who's working towards the rank of Eagle, and he has some amazing plans, we have lots of volunteers lined up, and we're looking forward to creating this training yard and dedicating that to Gracie when it's done. So again, no cost to the taxpayers, and if you want to come out, and in the old days, we'd say, swing a hammer, now we use screws and screw guns, battery-powered, and phew, make short work of things, and your thumb doesn't get black and blue, because I'm not a very handy guy unless it's electric. So with that being said, I just wanted to share all of that with you. I am very pleased, as I've told you 100 times, to be the police chief in this community. There's a lot coming down the pike here in March. I also encourage people to get out and vote. I encourage people to support the police department in the sense of approving the town budget, and support all of my friends like Melissa and Michelle and RJ and all the others that have worked really hard with their budgets. And I want to say a big thank you to all of you on the Select Board for everything that you do, and all the budget sessions that we had, and all of the great questions. And I think the community needs to understand, it's not easy to be a member of the Select Board. Doesn't matter if you're in Bennington or anywhere else. So I want you to know, I appreciate all of you, I know all the first responders appreciate you, and there's a lot of support for the Select Board in this community, and we are going to see some changes. And get to know folks, get out and vote, but vote yes on the budget, that's what's most important.
All right. So Chief, before you go, the public may have some questions, and maybe some Select Board members do as well.
Okay.
Don't leave yet! All right. Clark?
Quickly, as you may have, I don't know if you're here earlier, several people in the public have expressed concerns about upcoming or ongoing policy changes in terms of immigrants in our country here. I know you have a federal agent working with you, and I believe we don't have anyone in this town who might be considered worthy of deportation, but do you anticipate or foresee any issues that folks in this town need to be aware of? Or if you could ease the nerves and render comfort to some of the folks who are concerned about interactions between the PD and our immigrant community?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to address that. We are not, the Bennington Police Department is not working with any federal agents as far as deportation and ICE and all of that other stuff. I listened to the gentleman earlier, I think he left. Traffic infractions don't mean that you are deportable. You know, we will only work with federal agents in the event that a serious crime takes place. So with that being said, we have absolutely no interest, let me be clear, we have absolutely no interest in working with ICE or any federal agencies that are here to deport people that are here legally. Zero. And I just want to make that very clear. That's an excellent question, Clark, and I meant to address that, so thank you. Because our policy is clear that we don't call someone because we have an immigrant living in our community. We don't contact the federal authorities over that. The only time we would contact federal authorities is if the person is involved in a serious crime, and then we have to report. But other than that, we have zero interest in any of that.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Mona, please, come on up.
I would like to thank you and your whole department for all you're doing to get rid of the drugs and the druggies, and I feel bad that the law just slaps them on the hand and sends them back out, because you guys do lay your lives on the line, and our community does support you, and thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It took a long time for people in the community, within the state of Vermont and everywhere else, to realize that the police are doing their job, but sometimes the court is a little laid back. And I think that Governor Scott, if you watched his address last week on public safety, whether you like Governor Scott or not, that's irrelevant. You need to go on YouTube and you need to watch his presentation, he is taking this very, very seriously, and we need to take a serious look at what we do with people, you know, pre-trial, and when we're letting people out on a regular basis and not holding people accountable, it's a problem. We can take care of it on our end, but the state needs to do their part. So I appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Great. Other questions? Yes, please.
Martha Mackey, Bennington, Vermont. Chief, I just was wondering, in light of the really cold weather that we've been experiencing lately, I've had a lot of people approach me with concerns about safety for our community. And as your role of Emergency Management Director and your work on the local emergency management plan, I was just wondering if you could share with the public a little bit about what we've been doing to ensure that our community has plans in place or response in place in cases of extreme weather, and, you know, what that looks like, where we're at, and what we're hoping to end with that.
Sure. So let's start with cold, really quickly, and if I don't answer your question, Martha, you get right back up here. Oh, I know. And all kidding aside, we have been, the police department, again, working with our community partners, going out and checking on folks that we know that are unhoused, a lot of them that are, there's not a lot that we have located recently. It seems like as the weather has gotten, I call it brutal, because I hate when it's below zero, but when it's gotten colder, there are a lot of people that are kind and take other people in, people find places to go. There are a couple of places, and I'm not comfortable, Martha, like saying exactly where they are, because I don't want a bunch of people flocking there, but there are at least two locations that I'm aware of that people are still in their 40-below sleeping bag sleeping bags and they, they choose to live like that and, and I can tell you tonight, as an example, my folks were at one of the locations just checking on them and, you know, we do that between all of the other things that, that we're doing, but there is a group of folks that are going out and, you know, visiting and trying to get people housed and get them the, the things that they need. As far as my position as the Emergency Management Director, there is, as you know and others know, there are people here in this room that are sitting, we, we are working towards some annexes for emergency, our local emergency management plan, the, we call it the LIMP and we're, we're working towards putting some plans into play, for example, using Jonah, getting information out about serious weather and as cold as it's been, we have been working on our heat annex, trying to develop information there and a great example is, there's a group of us that have come together and we work on all of that, there's a meeting this coming Friday and we have our letters ready to go out to local groups asking them if they're interested in learning more about becoming a shelter in the event of inclement weather and things like that. We're also identifying locations that we can send people to in the event of hot weather or cold weather and, so there's, there's a lot going on behind the scenes and I think that all of you will be really proud when these annexes are done and, but it's a lot of work, especially for the people in this room that are sitting on this team, it's a lot of work. We get to spend an hour together and sometimes we, we get sidetracked, we, and, but I think that we are really moving forward and we're accomplishing a lot, that's, that's my opinion and it is fun to get opinions from others and it's great that we're all working together, very, very similar to, you know, Project Alliance and Situation Table, but it's a different type of progress that we're seeing, so. Thank you.
Other, excuse me, other questions?
I don't know a lot about the Situation Table model, but it really kind of fascinates me. Can you just talk a little bit about the process and how long you stick with a person? I mean, I understand, you know, you come up with a plan and you implement it and it maybe sometimes has to shift and how long do you follow this individual and do they ever get like discharged?
Well, let me, let me share this with you, so, we just stood up the Situation Table, as I said earlier, and we have, we'll call them clients, we have three clients right now. Our goal is to shift and make changes that are necessary to continue working with them within the program and we'll work with them as, as long as they're, they're willing to work with us. That, that may mean, not shipping them off someplace else, but that may mean, like we talked about, rehab, housing, finding a family member that's willing to take them in, that, that they haven't been associated with in a while, there's so much that, that we can do to, to get them the assistance and guidance that they need. So, Situation Table's new to us, Benstat's been working, Project Alliance has been working and the Situation Tables are being stood up in Bennington, Rattleboro, Springfield, Rutland, and I believe St. Albans and right, right now, the Situation Tables, the training and the, the guidance for these Situation Tables are being paid for by the state of Vermont, not, not local taxpayer money is, in the sense that, you know, from, from the town budget and, and we're gonna stick with this program as long as we can to, to get people assistance that they need.
And just one other quick question, are the other two, Benstat and Project Alliance, are they, are they, are they all part of the same process or do, are they more standalone?
They're, they're more standalone, but we're, but I can tell you that, you know, Benstat was accomplishing some of the same things that we were accomplishing, that we're, that we're, that we planned to accomplish with the Situation Table, except the Situation Table encompasses a much larger area, if that makes sense. You're welcome.
So, Chief, in these multi-faceted approaches, I, my experience in inner-city emergency rooms, we live what you do, same cohort, in and out, day in, day out, and we found ourselves dealing more with behaviors than problems and it sounds as if Benstat and so forth, you're addressing the problems and it sounds to be more of a proactive setting than reactive.
Correct.
Yeah.
Again, we're, we're looking at the stats and trying to get the guidance and assistance that people need before they continue to call us or they continue to go down the wrong path. So, in other words, we're trying to get out in front of things instead of waiting for something to happen, just like as Martha brought up with the, the local emergency management plan and the annexes, you know, trying to, to identify issues and get out in front of them. So, again, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not here to blow my own horn or whatever because there's so many people that have been helpful, but, you know, Bennington is amazing to me in the sense that people care and they want to get out in front of things and get people the help that they need, so, and, and proper planning and preparation as well, so. Mr. Haley?
Earlier you mentioned fairly significant increases in traffic citations and warnings and as you know, we've been discussing traffic calming quite a bit here. Are the increases, do you think, more due to more people making bad decisions while they're driving or increased focus on that in your enforcement practices?
I, I'm gonna stand before you and tell you that I think it's, it's us focusing on problematic areas where people in, in directing officers to work in certain locations where we're receiving complaints and, you know, and like I said earlier, listening to the community and, and assigning officers under what we call a directed patrol. So if I have, maybe if I have a, a fourth officer on a shift, maybe I send them, for example, over to North Bennington to work problem areas there, or I send them up to Prospect Street to monitor the stop sign that everybody seems to forget that's there, or we send them into Old Bennington where the speed limit's 25 miles an hour and, you know, sometimes this time of year, you know, we see people in excess of that. You know, the, the other night in a 25 mile an hour zone on Main Street, someone was doing 57 miles an hour and, you know, I think sometimes people need that, that subtle reminder and it's not for any other reason that we have directed our people to work problem areas, we're giving them direction and they're responding to our requests and we're responding to the community.
Super, thank you. Any other questions, anyone has, yes, Chris, come on up.
I, Chris, Bennington, I had questions about, I've noticed quite recently that there's been quite a bit of issues with panhandling with a specific individual in, in Bennington that has been very aggressive in how they've been practicing that and I, could you perhaps illustrate what is okay and what is not okay considering the fact that it's unconstitutional, it is constitutional to panhandle in Bennington and when it crosses that line into not being okay and when they, people need to reach out to you?
Yes, people need to reach out when people panhandle if people are aggressive and you feel threatened by someone, someone coming up to you and asking you for $5 and you politely saying, "No, thank you" or "I, I can't help you today" and them walking away is one thing, but if they continue, if they continuously ask you and block your path and you're not able to leave, that is a form of disorderly conduct for preventing flow, so, and it places people in fear. So if people are in fear, then they need to call the office and we need to send an officer over and see if we can curb that behavior. I'm aware, I've seen some of the postings on Facebook, there are some folks that are afraid of this person and you need to call so that we can follow up with that and that is another situation where, you know, like Benstat, if we have enough contact, Benstat or even the Situation Table, if it gets to the point where we can put this person or any, no, I don't want to talk about one person, if we can put someone that's really in need in contact with services, that might change the behavior. Okay?
Can you just tell us what number to call, because you don't call 911 in this situation?
No, it's 802-442-1030, that's the main line that goes into the Bennington Police Department, you will get someone to answer the phone. We are not an agency that allows a phone tree, there are multiple agencies now in the state that are utilizing phone trees and you have up to, the biggest one that I know of has eight options. If I'm calling the police, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to listen to a phone tree. So, you will get a response from our communication staff and you need to tell them what's going on. Again, we've had this conversation before, if they're busy and they place you on a hold, please stay on the line and, and we'll answer because again, we're, we're not accepting recordings, we're not asking people to document their complaints at a computer in our office like some agencies are going to, we, we want to have communications with people, find out what's going on and, and, and be able to help them, so, 802-442-1030.
Everyone should put it in their phone, it's in mine.
So.
Yes, Jack.
Jack Rossermanley, Bennington, Vermont. As a follow-up to that question, if someone were to call that number but they do not speak English, what is the procedure?
So, we, we have a couple of different things that we're, that we're working with right now, we can call for a translator and at the, at the same time, even, I'll even go one step further with you, Jack, a lot of the officers, we have issued iPhones to our officers and we have Google Translate and, and that's, that's how we're, we're moving forward, you know, and, and we have even put phones, iPhones in communications at each dispatch console so they have the opportunity to use Google Translate also. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? This has been highly informative, as always.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna step out because I know my friend Melissa Courier is here for some reason and I would like for you to hear from our CPARB folks and I will step away, I've been at work since 7:00 this morning. I, again, appreciate the community, I appreciate all of you, get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, next up is CPARB, yes? So we have the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, Revised Resolution and Kelly Carroll, who is the Chair of CPARB and Kate Cost, who is Vice Chair, are coming with a slightly revised resolution from last time, yes?
Before we get started, can I just make one comment about something that's coming up with CPARB next month?
Sure.
So, and I think it's timely based on some of the comments that were said this evening. So on Wednesday, February 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, CPARB will be holding a public safety education forum at the Mount Anthony Union High School in the auditorium from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We're very grateful that Cat TV is going to be covering this live and we will have Chief Paul Doucet, who we appreciate, will be on, one of our panelists, he will be on the panel and we also have Lieutenant Stephen Coot from the Vermont State Police, we have our state's attorney, Erica Marthage, we have Alia Reeve, who is a psychiatrist with United Counseling and Stu Hurd will be representing the town of Bennington and we're gonna be talking about factors and prevention strategies that are impacting community-level violence in Vermont, we'll be talking about understanding the current violent crime rates in Vermont and why offenders of serious crimes are often released without jail or prison time and we're also gonna be talking about the, the pros and cons and the risks of vigilanteism. So, there will be timed for some questions go on from the audience and based on some of the comments that were here this evening, questions for the chief and, and comments that came out, I just want to make sure everybody knows that, it's Wednesday, February 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
26th.
Or, sorry, February 26th, in the Mount Anthony High School auditorium, it will be covered live by Cat TV and we will have childcare at no cost, you just need to pre-register and we're very thankful to Jonah, who is working on the publicity and advertisements, so you'll be seeing more about that in the first week of February. And right now, we're here to talk about revisions in the resolution for CPARB and I'm gonna turn this over to Kate Cost, who is a Vice Chair of CPARB because she's done a lot of work on this and she's gonna be talking and presenting, so Kate?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kate Cost, CPARVice Chair, Bennington, so if you want to go to the first slide. One of the things that's came up at last month's meeting was a need to clarify what was changed from the original and to this latest version. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, we've been working on this since September, it's gotten through at least six different versions of it and so I thought it best to highlight between the original and this current version. We've taken comments from select board members, from members of the community, both at our meetings, our CPARB meetings, as well as the select board meetings and we've done what we can to incorporate those in there. We've tried to maintain the spirit and intention of the original, but just to clarify language as much as we can and get a clear sense of direction for members of CPARB in terms of our responsibility and what we need to do to sort of improve the relationship, if you will. So, please let me know if you have questions as we go, I can point out areas if you want in the current and the original, if that's, if that's needed. So in the original resolution, there was little implicit, explicit, I'm sorry, incorporation of community policing principles in the introduction, in the goals and activities and so what we sought to do was make those explicit and so if you have the current resolution in front of you, that is everything that precedes the goal, the goals, okay? And we wanted to use the language of community policing in terms of problem-solving, organizational strategies, which is in the introduction, but also then rec, to, to have very active voice, if you will, to recommend, to foster and to review collaborative efforts in, within the context of the goals and activities. So you'll see what I consider sort of minor language changes in some cases and in other cases it's very explicit in terms of what activities we're going to do, use, do in order to achieve those goals. So we wanted to make those activities as measurable as we possibly could so that we can be accountable and transparent to the community. The second item in the original resolution was a vague reference to undertake other activities consistent with CPARB goals. We made those explicit and in terms of examples of activities to engage individuals, organizations and the community. So in the original, there is no explicit identification of when yearly reports were due, which created some confusion for us, nor was there explicit information about the content that was supposed to be in there or whom it was given to. Please keep in mind that this is a new board, we're only in our second or third year and, and so we're, and we're all volunteers, so we're very new to this entire process and so in thinking about future members, we wanted to make sure that we were explicit as much as we possibly could. So what we did is we clarified with town staff and others of all of those issues and so now we have explicit identification of when the yearly report is due, the content of the report and who it's given to, okay? The fourth item is there was no mention of obtaining updates on community-based safety initiatives and while these are relatively new, at least that's my understanding, in some cases like Benstat and Situation Table, they've all come up, but my understanding is, is that Project Alliance has been around for at least a few years. I'm relatively new to the community, so I'm still learning in terms of history on some of these things, so, but we have explicit now directive to obtain updates and on community-based safety initiatives within the area of activities. You might notice that most of our focus has been on the goals and activities because they direct our action. The fifth item was there was no identification of materials needed for review, now that's all very explicit. There was a mention at- There was a mention at the last meeting around safety data. That's been changed in this latest version. So we took that recommendation, I can't remember if it was from the Select Board or from the community, but we took that and we changed that. So now there is explicit identification of materials needed for review. The sixth item, and this has to do with the amount of time that we want to spend in the community. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, we have had in the last year, in 2024, eight different listening sessions throughout the community. So if we're going to meet every month, that creates a burden for those members of our committee who are working. It makes it very hard for them to attend the meeting every month and do two or three listening sessions during that same month. And so what we're proposing is that we meet every other month because then that gives time for members to be able to be out in the community and listening to what they have to say. In the origin, the seventh one is members had to be residents of Vermont. We checked with council, there's no restriction on that. And so because, particularly because of the housing issues and other elements that are in the membership on the committee, we wanted to have it open to non-residents of Vermont with all the other qualifiers that are there. In other words, that they are reactive in the community, they volunteer, or they work in the community, and so they're very knowledgeable of that. The eighth one is that there was no time limit on training completion or specific content for CPARB members, the Chair or Vice Chair. And so, for example, there were three new members this time. That's puts a burden to a certain extent on the Police Department who delivers the training to us. And so because of commitments by members of the board, but also the Police Department, sometimes these things can sort of go off into the universe, if you will, in terms of time. And so we wanted to have control on that. We wanted to place some restrictions on that. And so we have it now that there's a specific training, one that must be identified, and that was a recommendation from a member of the community at the last meeting. So we've got it so that there's a list at the beginning of every year that we offer, that we give to the Police Department and that they then know what we want our new members to be trained in, right? So for example, as we move to a more, much more diverse community, it's important that members of CPARB have implicit bias training, explicit. As we do more listening sessions, it becomes important that we have some training in terms of how to facilitate those. Those are just a couple of examples of things that might not be ordinarily included in our training. Completion also has to be within nine months of taking office. Okay? So next slide. So these are the things that remain the same. This first item, to fully realize the mission of BPD is actually on lines 13 and 14 in the first page. Oh, sure.
Can I just say that I think if you have copies of the newest version, you should probably give them to us.
Oh, yeah.
Because what we are, I'm watching people flip through, what we have is that older version.
Okay.
So it is a...
Do you want them right now?
Just whenever you're going to, I'm thinking at some point you're probably going to tell us what the newest changes are, so whenever you're doing that.
Okay, so maybe when, so these are the things that are the same, okay? Because I have those with me. And so, as I mentioned, the fully realize the mission of BPD, the use of the words "review" and "recommend" are the same. They're in the old, they're in the original, they're in the new. Everything in sections entitled "composition and eligibility," except for the residency is the same, and everything in sections titled "review and definitions" are the same. The one thing that we did do in the new one, and this is again from a comment at the last meeting, was that we moved considerations to a different part underneath "training" and we now call it "further considerations." And there was a phrase that was added in terms of the charter, potential charter changes that are there. Okay? And so if we want to go to questions then, and I'll get those copies for you while you think of the questions.
Yeah, and then I think probably going through those most recent changes. So those most recent changes are in response to comments that people made at the last meeting.
Yes.
Yep. This is, this is the old presentation.
Yes.
Correct. And I think for the, our timing, so we require materials to be to the town by Wednesday at noon in order to be in the packet and CPARB wasn't meeting till Thursday evening. So the timing didn't line up and that's, so that's why we had older materials in our packets. And we did send out the newer stuff on Friday morning after we got it from CPARB. They were very, very prompt, but it was too late for the packet.
And just as an FYI, the CPARB members approved all the changes that the Select Board members suggested and that the community suggested, so.
And so the new under, under materials?
So under materials for review, it did say something about residency, town and state, town and state residents.
For traffic stop data.
Yes, for traffic stops. Now it just says all traffic stop data that's available.
Okay. Does everyone see that? That's page two, line 23?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, under meetings?
So those, things that were changed under meetings, you had seen that CPARB members had approved those in previous meetings, maybe in October or at our November meeting. So at your early January meeting, that was already something that you would have seen that CPARB had approved of or voted to approve.
And so the question of whether there was a way to be, was there sufficient sensitivity to individuals who might like to meet, might like to meet with CPARB but might like to do that either off-camera or without, at a meeting where the Police Department is not present? That is being, that is being addressed in what way?
Actually, we felt that one of the primary goals of CPARB was to be transparent, utterly transparent with the Police Department and that to build trust, it's important that there is a representative from the Police Department that attends our meetings so that we can hear from the Police Department. If someone from the community wants to, has concerns about that, then they are more than welcome to contact our Chair, who will then talk to members. But we did not feel, we felt that that would undermine issues of transparency, accountability, and trust.
Are there opportunities for individuals to meet in listening sessions or in other ways?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, the Police Department, members of the Police Department are not invited to our listening sessions.
So a member could, so an individual could say, would CPARB be willing to have a listening session with X group of people?
Absolutely.
Or with a neighborhood?
Yeah. In fact, we would love that to occur because at this point, we're contacting groups. Sometimes they never get back to us, so it's hard to know what they're thinking. Other times, it's just a matter of trying to set up a date where their constituents, if you will, their attendees, their members, all different kinds of folks, can meet with us. And it's always, while we were, while we were, sorry, it's late, my words are getting funny, while we are always willing to meet with folks, sometimes it's difficult on our end to make sure that there's somebody available because folks are working. But we do our best to accommodate folks who want to meet with us and we go out and seek them, if you will.
Can I add something?
Sure.
And I just want to add, when we talk about the listening sessions that we do out in the community, those are in small groups. We don't have a quorum, so Cat TV doesn't film them. The Police Department is not invited to it and even when the organization that's hosting invites the Police Department, they've respectfully declined. So that's the way that we run it. I know we did talk about some of the comments about not having the police welcome at our meetings and I'm going to speak for myself, I don't want to speak on, you know, for the entire board, but I really think that sends the wrong message.
I mean, you are speaking for the entire board today.
So it sends the wrong message because community policing is about involving everybody and that means that the police have to be welcome as well. And I understand that, or we understand, that some people may not be comfortable with that and we will do our best to accommodate that. But you do have to remember, our meetings are open meeting, they are filmed, so there's a limit to how we can do that. But we would welcome anyone if they wanted to meet with a couple of us, but we do have to follow open meeting and the police do have to be involved with what we're doing because if not, we're not going to change. We're not going to, you know, it's all about, and it's all about the relationships, so.
Great, thank you. So other questions from the Select Board? Questions from the community? Yes, Scott, please come up. Scott? Oh.
No, I'm not going in.
Scott, you would come over here. Are you speaking as an individual or are you speaking as a member of CPARB?
No.
You can't speak, are you speaking as a member?
Scott Frost, I'll speak as an individual.
Okay, thank you.
Under further considerations, there's a clause that CPARB does not have the power or authority to investigate, review, or otherwise participate in matters involving specific police personnel, specific police-related incidents. I think that's very important that we preserve that and not make a change for both the Select Board and the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? Yeah, Tom, are you raising your hand?
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, I'm struggling a little bit and I completely get the fact that the meetings have to be open. I still am struggling a bit with the fact that the police should be at every meeting. I think we may have to, we've got to find, the thing I'm struggling with is that we need the data from those individuals to find out why they don't want to engage with the police. Otherwise, we can't work on those issues. So do we need to include something in here that will, I know you have been doing listening sessions of your own volition, but it is not in the, in the resolution.
Actually, it's under, it's in activities and so what we've got on, it's on page two, line nine through 12. And it says actively engage individuals and organizations in the community to encourage and support a culture of inclusion, trust, accountability through the use of listening sessions, attendance at community events, which would be like our public safety forum, and other relevant activities consistent with the goals of CPARB and this resolution as authorized by law. So we wanted to leave it as open as we could about what those activities could be, but if we can move to every other month, we can have more listening sessions. We can go to more neighborhoods because what we're doing is we're going to, like with Willowbrook, we went to their community center there. We would also like to be able to go to Applegate or Beach Court, other neighborhoods that have centers like that, but also to have opportunities to engage in other organizations. Like we started to go to Beans and Bagels every month, okay? We went to the Senior Center and we'd like to be able to go there.
CRJ.
CRJ, the Restored Justice Center for their drop-in with kids. We'd like to go more often to Community Cafe, other areas where people congregate where we can informally talk to folks about what's going on and what our role is and what their experience is on.
Okay, well, I think the reason I didn't look to that section for something covering that was because under activities, the first line specifies that it's in collaboration with the BPD.
Well, we've got to have that in terms of being able to review their training.
And what we bring back? I'm wondering, Tom, I'm wondering if under, one, two, three, I don't know, fourth or fifth, line nine or 10, wherever that is, through the use of listening sessions, if, would it help, would it help if we specified, I'm making this up, you know, a minimum of three listening sessions a year rather than it being sort of you can or you can choose not to do it, but just sort of add that?
That would be helpful.
So right now, it said, there's actively engage individuals and organizations and then it lists through the use of listening sessions, attendance at community events, and other relevant activities. Maybe, is there a way to be a little more specific and say to encourage and support a culture of inclusion, trust, and accountability through the use of a minimum of three listening sessions a year, attendance, and then leave the rest of it? I think it could be that you never did another listening session. I know that's not your intention, but this is a list of things that are possible but not required. So I'm just saying, I don't know if that would help, but I'm just thinking that would be a way to sort of build in the expectation that there would be opportunities for people to meet with you without being, I mean, I could see being on Cat TV being a deterrent as well. Someone might want to talk with you but not be on camera.
Which is why they don't, we don't invite them, they don't attend. These are all very common.
So that's why I'm asking if it could help to say three or four, some number of listening sessions.
What about if, what about if it also included members of the Police Department will not be present?
Oh, I think that's really good, yeah. I like that. I think just what you're saying, Jean, is nice.
I mean, one of the things that we'd like to do is we'd like to have a listening session with the police. So, I mean, if we put, you know, because we'd like to get what...
Well, you can do that.
Yeah, but if they're not expected to attend, I mean, my concern is that by putting numbers, very often, any kind of organization, whether it's a committee or whatever, you put a number there, that's what they're going to do. And so I hesitate to do that.
Well, we can do a minimum of, I mean...
Yeah.
I tend to agree with what Kate's saying. You put a number there, that's what a committee is going to do. So I hesitate in putting a number there. I feel it's kind of holding something more, kind of micromanaging and I feel like we've really, we've picked the board and I feel, I trust the board since we've picked the board. I feel like they're going above and beyond already, so I want to hand it over to them and let them do what they're doing because I feel like they're doing so well.
What they're do, what you are doing is trying to be more specific. I mean, the whole point of these revisions is to be much more, much clearer about what you're planning to, I mean, I'm not wedded to saying three listening sessions. you're planning to, I mean, I'm not wedded to saying three listening sessions, but I think Tom's point of somehow making it explicit that there will be, there will be sessions that are not filmed.
I think, if I could just, if you don't mind, I think it's important that we realize what the goal here is. We're trying to make sure that the public who is concerned has the opportunity to speak with you and that we're just having trouble finding that.
Yeah.
So if you could help us with that by, you know, if it's, if it's listening sessions because it's a tool that you already use and it already fits the parameter, could that language be expanded so that that's the place that people will look to speak with you in a setting that they are comfortable with? I think that addresses Tom and Jeanie's concerns.
So if we said through the use of multiple listening sessions in the community, would that, would that help?
What about something like create an environment that's comfortable or?
Yeah, I don't know how we'd measure that.
It doesn't have to be measured.
Well, this is an activity.
Everything to me doesn't have to be measured.
So this is an activity. I think in terms of a goal, a goal might be to create, yikes, I don't know if we're up to creating an environment. I don't know that we have, I don't know that we as volunteer members have the skillset to create an environment.
Well, you do address it under goals. I mean, you say foster collaborative efforts within the community to hear all voices. So I, I mean, Tom, I don't know if you have any further thoughts about?
I give the committee a lot of credit. You're doing what most of the public wants you to do. You're getting together at your meetings, you have members of the police department there. That was the whole goal, to get people in town involved and committed. You're doing listening sessions, you're doing outreach. There's already other people, you know, people can go and find you other places if they don't want to come to your meetings. But everything I've heard, everybody thinks it's working well, and it's concerning that there, it seems there's a few people that aren't happy that you're working so well together. I mean, we have to break the stereotype that's gone on that everybody in law enforcement is out to get all of us and we should all be afraid of law enforcement. I give you a lot of credit, and I think, I think in a lot of ways with the listening sessions and the outreach you're doing, I mean, I really don't know what else people would want you to do. After all, you all are volunteers.
I think some of the problem comes from the confusion between advisory review and oversight, and that is one of the things that we'll talk about at the forum. But I think that that causes some confusion, and I think that quite frankly, there's people that aren't happy with that. People would prefer oversight. There are things in place in Vermont where that happens at a state level. The chief isn't here, but he can speak more to that. So, you know, I think we have to be careful that we don't send the wrong message to the community, and we have to be careful we don't send the wrong message to law enforcement in trying to find that. And I'm hesitant to say that, you know, I would agree, and it's your, it's your board, it's your resolution, it's your choice to do and put in whatever you want. But I think if you put in here that the police are not welcome whether or not to be at a listening session or something, no one can foresee the future. And we may have something that happens a year, two, three years down the road where the community might want a listening session and they might want the police involved with it. So if you put it in the charter, does that eliminate that option for us?
Yeah, I do think that's a good point. Clark, go ahead.
I think a word that would be quite helpful here is conducive, create a circumstance conducive to free exchange.
In the goals or in the activities?
Even in the activities and even the goals. I think ultimately, we want just their board and the select board here and the PD to be able to work together and communicate freely back and forth with members of the community. So I, you know, I don't want to be, you know, I don't think we should pin them down and be dogmatic about this, this, and this must happen. I think we need to create an environment conducive to exchange, interface and open exchange between all elements of the community.
Do you have, so there is a goal that says foster collaborative efforts within the community to hear all voices. You're suggesting, do you have?
I like the word conducive, if we can work that into that line, you know, it's a word I think that indicates working together for a common goal. Instead of CPAR saying this is what CPAR will do, I think a conducive environment is for all elements of the community to be involved in this process.
And that, and that environment could change depending on the situation.
Correct, that's correct.
Right, it's flexible. All right, so Clark, so if the foster collaborative efforts and?
So if it read foster collaborative efforts within the community, that is conducive to hearing all voices.
Yes.
Because then the way that we attempt to achieve that is all those activities?
Yes.
Okay, so within the community, that's conducive to hearing all voices.
Yeah, I mean, the word conducive could be time of day.
Sure.
Location, who's going to be there? It's a really good word.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And just as a point of reference, our, our listening sessions have been early in the morning, over the lunch hour, in the afternoon, and at evening. So we've tried to.
All different days of the week.
Oh, in different days of the week.
Tom, how are you feeling?
I feel a little bit better.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else on this public select board? Are we, with that, with that one change on the goal, under the goals, are we comfortable with this resolution? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to accept?
One more quick thing.
Oh, okay, almost there.
Yeah, we were close. In, under page two, line seven, review anonymized complaints, compliments and complaints to be utilized by the CPAR. I wonder if, if the situation should arise that they think that they need to review things that they're not allowed to, should they be directed to kick it up the chain?
I think it's in here.
Where?
I think it, right, you guys have addressed that under, unless changed from, through the Town of Bennington Charter, under further considerations, I, yeah. CPAR does not have the power, so.
Investigate.
Yeah, and that the Bennington Select Board will retain the town review board function as required by the Bennington Town Charter and Vermont statute. So I, I think it, I think they are directed to kick it up the chain.
Well, I don't know that they're directed to, it just says that they don't have the power.
Well, it says they can, we can, or we have to.
Right.
By law.
I can live with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a willful act.
Just as a point of clarification, CPAR doesn't have to approve the change that you're suggesting, do we? Okay, so.
No, so we would actually approve that change.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think what we wanted to make sure was that CPAR was comfortable with what you were bringing to us.
Yeah, I think we are.
All right, any other comments, select board or public on this? Tortis, come on up.
Tortis Histlehart, Bennington. I haven't seen the document, but I'm just wondering, CPAR grew out of the, the community meetings and the policy changes following the report from the NAACP or whatever, whoever they were.
IACP.
So my question is, under goals, is the word trust in there? Because that's even, you know, the conducive is important, but the purpose in the end is, is to address the situation where many in the community had lost trust with the police, and there was an adversarial relationship. So, you know, I think that, that could be an overarching, you know, yes, to support the Bennington Police Department, but it's the, the, the community part of it is that the, the members of the community and the police force together trust each other.
Yeah, trust is actually on line 16. I know you haven't seen the document, but yeah, trust is, is right there.
So, yeah, so that, yeah, so the, yeah, so Sarah, what you were just saying, so starting on line 14, this is under the first section explaining what CPAR is. Through the creation of a CPAR, the Town of Bennington, its police department and the select board are committed to working with the entire community to ensure safety, accountability, transparency, and trust, and to move Bennington toward achieving its vision of becoming a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in its, in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life. So I think, I think it is implicit, or it is explicit in here. Yeah, I don't know. Does that, do you think?
I think it says it.
Yeah, it's also then in the activities where we measure the collaborative efforts.
Right, and so, and, and the, the understanding there is increased collaboration equals increased trust.
Yeah, that's, one would certainly hope.
Okay, very good point. Thank you, Tortis. And we do apologize for the timing on this, but it, it felt like we needed to move forward. Anything else?
Excuse me, I have a question. Are we leaving in or adding on page two, one, 10, a minimum of three?
No.
No.
Right, no, we're not, yes. So the only change we've made was on line 40, 40.
Forty, on page one.
All right, do we have a motion? Do we do that?
I make a motion that we accept the revised resolution.
With the one change.
With the one change.
And you just seconded it?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Any more discussion? Right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much for this, for all the work you do.
And just quickly, you said your meeting at the high school is the 26th next month?
Our meeting next, no, we're doing a public safety education forum.
On the 26th?
On the 26th, and then our meeting is the 27th. And if we're going to go every other month, we'll be meeting in February, we'll meet the even months. And this way, we will not interfere with the Bennington Fire Department annual meeting in January or Thanksgiving in November. So we'll have the room reserved.
You've thought this through.
You're bumping into a candidate forum on the 26th, we just learned tonight, though.
We've had, yeah, we've had this, I'm sorry, we've had this booked for a couple of months, so.
It happens.
It happens, but.
There's only so many days to go around.
It is the same day?
Yeah, so, thank you.
And you just say, is the select board candidate forum here at the same night?
One of them is.
One of them is, one of them is announced tonight.
Okay, so, and so that, which is at seven, and this is, starts at six, but it goes to eight. Okay, got it. Well, that's a bummer. All right, so we're moving on, purchasing policy review, purchasing policy. Dan, hi, Dan Monks is coming to talk with us about the purchasing policy.
Hi, Dan. Hey there. I thought by delaying it to this meeting, we might not go so late, but we're even later this time, being an hour and 15 minutes beyond our time. But as you folks know, you guys have, the select board has asked town staff to review adopted policies on a regular basis. And the first policy identified by the board for the staff to review was the purchasing policy. Just a reminder on the purchasing policy and the history, this policy was completely, was, had a comprehensive rewrite back in 2019. You'll recall that Bill Scully, a former select board member, had requested that and worked closely with the town's finance director and other staff members to develop this, this policy that was adopted in 2019. That work included an analysis by the Director of VLCT Model Policies, SVSU Policies, Federal Guidelines, and the policies about the municipality. So unlike some policies, this one did get a fairly recent comprehensive review, and that's why we haven't recommended a lot of changes, although there have been some things that have happened, and we are recommending three, three changes to the policy. This particular document includes what I would consider a pretty comprehensive code of conduct when it comes to exercising the purchasing function for the town. But as you know, the state did recently adopt the municipal code of ethics, which applies to everyone, applies to all municipal officials as defined in the statute, most of which would be considered purchasing agents by the town. So we want to make sure that this policy reflects the fact that not only does our local code of conduct apply, but also the municipal code of, code of ethics. So we would just add the following statement, that all employees shall comply with the State of Vermont Municipal Code of Ethics and the code of conduct in this policy. We just think that clarifies things. It's not necessary because regardless, the code of ethics applies, but I think it's a good reminder to folks that it's not just the local policy. We also have, because of recent hires, there are some folks that should be added as purchasing agents, and those include the information technology director, our IT director, Nick Cave, and our communications coordinator. So we would add, ask that those be added to the list of authorized purchasing agents on page two. One final change, it's a pretty minor one, but we think it's important to keep this document up to date. We would, under the grant-funded purchases section, page three, we would change the date of 2018 to 2024 in two locations to reflect that the grant threshold set in 2018 remain the same in 2024. So although the thresholds do not change, it's important to make the document clear that that's a recent, that's a recent adoption or a recent edict by the, by the federal government. So other than that, we, I did review this closely with, with our finance director, and we remain comfortable that this reflects appropriate practice for a municipality of our size and budget. So obviously, this is a policy that the select board reviews and adopts, so whatever changes you folks would like to make, obviously, that's, that's your prerogative. I do note that Melissa, she's hiding in the back, but she is here, our finance director, so she would probably be most appropriate to answer any technical questions regarding the policy, but both of us are here to, to answer questions if you have any.
Great, all right, we'll start with select board. Any questions on the policy or comments? Yes, Nancy?
On page three, under grant-funded purchases, contracts, multi-year contracts may be entered into with prior approval of the town manager. Additionally, the town manager should notify the select board within 30 days of the award. So does this allow the town manager, without any public discussion, to enter into contracts, leases, agreements, or memos of understanding that the taxpayers will pay for?
So Melissa, I'll take a shot at this one. So the answer is yes, but they, it doesn't mean that they, that the manager doesn't have to follow the balance of the policy. So for instance, if it's a large purchase, they would, they would still have to follow the sealed bid process?
I'm, I'm not talking purchases, I'm talking contracts, leases, and agreements. You know, I don't know what other words go with the word contracts.
So, so this is a purchasing policy which, which involves the expenditure of funds to purchase services or goods. So it would be my opinion that a lease would not fall under that particular description, but Melissa, I don't know if you want to opine or steward?
Well, the board approved it, so, for example, and this is a lease or contract that was signed, I guess it was in 2023, with the town manager and the YCEO and signed, I guess it was in 2023, with the town manager and the Y CEO and the person who owns the former Catamount School, where the taxpayers started paying $3,000 a month to rent Catamount, $36,000 a year. Now, was there ever a public discussion on the agenda?
I'm looking at Stu.
You were the chair, though. I just didn't, did the Select Board have a public discussion?
I believe that that was presented to the board as, as, when, when the Y moved into the Bennington Sports Center and began to operate there, I believe we presented to the board that we would be paying some of the rental costs. They pay additional costs.
But the concern I have is this says the town manager can enter into the contract, and then within 30 days after assigning that contract, the Select Board is supposed to be told. Well, that's backwards. The board, there should be a public discussion.
Can I ask why? Are there circumstances? This, I mean, this, I think, has been in effect for a while. Can you talk about why a town manager might need to sign a contract before notifying the Select Board? I mean, are there, are, I'm assuming that this is to cover any, anything that needed to happen, like on a more immediate?
So the only, and Melissa, you have a lot more knowledge than I do, but the only multi-year contracts that come to mind to me are after we bid for utilities like propane or fuel. We'll, we'll ask for a bid for a three-year period. Those are the only ones that come to mind. Are there others that come to mind? Melissa?
Melissa, introduce yourself.
Chief of Carrier, Finance Director, Public Speaker, not. Yes, I think that Dan's examples are correct. We also recently, forbidding purposes also for the new payroll, time and attendance that you're very well aware of. I mean, that was a multi-year contract as well. It does happen occasionally, but Stuart is, but I can't think of anything. Nothing comes to mind that it isn't something that you're already aware of.
Wouldn't the board have already either been aware in the budgeting process or been aware in the lead-up?
Yes.
To the outreach of the bid, et cetera? I mean.
Yes, I, I, nothing can come, comes to mind that you wouldn't already be.
I mean, the example you just gave us is a good one about a contractual agreement for the time and attendance piece.
Yes.
That's standard. That's just, just administration at that point.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's important to remember that the monies that, that the manager is authorized in the expenditure of are budgeted monies that have been approved by the voters generally and by this board before they go to a vote.
Yeah, that, that's a very important point that I neglected to make is, that is, these all have to be budgeted expenditures. If we have, as Stuart likes to say, an out-of-budget experience, that's something that the board has to be aware of. But these are all, but these are all items that were budgeted for, voted on by the voters, and we're just implementing that, the, the purchase of those services or, or goods that have already been approved.
The payments would also be on the warrants. Yes, but I'm just thinking, we wouldn't want to run out, I mean, if we're, we're doing field oil, it's, yeah, you guys are going to go out to bid, you're going to take the lowest bid that's, you know, a decent company, and, and, and go with it, and then you're going to let us know. We don't need to know that before, before you sign that contract.
But those aren't the types of contracts and agreements I'm talking about. I'm talking long-term contracts with nonprofits. I, I can think of two that were signed two years ago, each for five years, and I'll bring them up to another tomorrow night. You can't, why would a local Select Board allow their taxpayers to put under a long-term contract without a public discussion and without the Select Board knowing?
So I think the short answer to Nancy's question is that those particular situations are not covered by the purchase, purchasing policy. So.
But if there's no public discussion and the leases are getting signed, they need to.
I'm not arguing whether or not they should or shouldn't be signed.
I'm sorry?
I'm not arguing, Nancy, whether those should or should not have been signed. What I'm saying is the purchasing policy doesn't contemplate those types of arrangements.
So it's not covered under this policy?
It's not covered by the policy.
Okay, so there's not going to be any leases, contracts, agreements, nothing for anything like that the taxpayers would pay for nonprofits?
So I can't speak to that, the town manager can. I'm not authorized. So I would say to you, this purchasing policy doesn't authorize me or Melissa to enter into those agreements, if that's what you're asking.
But the Select Board approved the policy, not the town manager. He goes by the policy.
Correct.
But in, in some of the cases, we have long-term leases with nonprofits, yes, that are originally approved by a Select Board with renewal options, and I am just exercising those renewal options as the time passes. And I think that's my job.
And then when the contract expired, it would have to be re-upped, re-approved, blah, blah, blah.
That's correct. And generally, when we look at, especially leases for space that we own, we are looking at renewable leases because the, the lessy needs to understand that this space is available for a time period and renewable for a time period. Otherwise, they, you know, you might as well do 30-day rental agreements.
And regardless, leases of that sort aren't purchases and aren't covered under what we're talking about tonight?
No.
All right, so other questions relating to this policy? Yes, please, Clark?
Criteria for bid selection.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry, page four.
I don't think your mic's on.
You're right, the mic's not on. Page four, criteria for bid selection. So I see numerical listings. Are these rankings or just points of consideration?
So Clark, I can answer that, and Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, though. They're not rankings. It's, these are examples of criteria that may be included in the bid.
A point to consider.
Yes, yes. It's not like, it's not like always price is number one, because you might get a very low price from a bidder that is not capable of performing the job. Yeah.
Okay. That's, that was my own thing. We used to joke about parachutes in the Army being sold by the lowest bidder.
It is a very good point.
Other, other questions on the policy? Anyone in the audience have a question?
I have more questions.
Okay.
Page two, purchase categories and limits. Whether you're looking at major policies, large purchases, I'm sorry, major purchases, large purchases. All purchases over $250,000 require prior approval of the town manager. Must follow a sealed bid process, and in addition, be advertised in local news sources. For over a quarter of a million dollars, I think we would advertise further out than local news, news sources?
So yes, that is true. And if you look at the sealed bid process.
Where is that?
Bottom of page three. Bids must be listed from an adequate number of sources. Invitation for bids will be advertised on appropriate web-based platforms and as deemed appropriate by the town, and shall include one or more of the following letters in a posting and trade publications or similar websites, local newspapers, or Vermont Publications. So it lists, you know, examples of, of where we should be seeking these things. And I will say, under the current situation, we see a lot more success by focused website bids versus putting in the banner, which we still do because we have to under the purchasing policy. But I dare say that any of these larger projects, we're not going to get any bids from somebody reading the banner.
What I'm looking at just says local news sources. Do you have an updated one?
Yeah. So we have to do the local news sources, but as, as I pointed out in the sealed bid process, we also do, we're also required to, to reach out to other appropriate sources like websites and trade publications, et cetera.
Because you're looking for response.
Yeah, we, we want as broad a response as we possibly can get.
I think, I think the purpose is twofold. The reason that you've run, the reason that it's in the policy to run in the banner is really to inform the taxpayer.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah, that's a very good point. That's so the public is aware of it.
Right.
I doubt that very, very infrequently will we get bidders for those large type of projects.
Your outreach will be dependent on what you're bidding.
Yes.
Yeah.
Recurred purchases on page three. Total value of the re-accurred purchase of a good or service is anticipated to exceed $100,000. In any fiscal year, the sealed bid process will be utilized. But after it's been awarded, it says, going forward, the bidder without necessity of additional bids or additional approval. Does that mean, once you award somebody a bid, that you don't have to go out to bid each year after that?
Well, so only if, only if we do a multi-year contract that's here, been notified of, and all other, all other processes have been followed. Is that accurate?
Yeah, but it says, all future purchases.
It says, once a bid has been accepted, all future purchases may be made for the contract period.
Yeah.
From that bidder. So it's only the contract.
Just for that one year?
Correct.
Exactly.
Or the period of the contract.
Whatever that, it might be multi-year.
Yeah. But, but, but a good example, Melissa's just reminded me, is our salt contract. So we go out to bid, we don't know how much salt we're going to buy in a year definitively, but we bid and we get a per-ton charge or whatever, per yard, I don't know what it is. And then we continue to purchase throughout the year for that, from that company because they won the bid for that particular service or product.
Right, but it says, re-accurred purchase of a good or service.
Yep.
To exceed $100,000 in any fiscal year. Well, I understand that for a year. But then it says, once a bid has been accepted, all future purchases, all for the contract.
Yeah, it has to be for.
So they're still going to have to go out to bid the next year?
Yes.
In the sealed bid process, down at the bottom on page three, on the last one, any and all bids may be rejected by the town.
Yes.
If it's something like a really big project, does anything come before the Select Board?
So you would have had to approve the, if it's a large project, it would have been part of the budgeting process to approve the expenditure of those funds?
You would, you would have approved the project for bid.
Yeah.
When we bid it, if in fact, we get five bidders, and for a variety of reasons, none of those bidders meet our desire, either for price or for performance, we can reject any and all bids. And that is, that is included in every bid notice that we do.
Yeah.
The town reserves the right.
A good example of that is if we, and this has happened unfortunately, if we think a project should be, come in at under $300,000, and they all come in at over half a million, we're going to reject all those bids and try to figure out how we can reduce the cost because we don't have enough funds to proceed. So that's, that's really why that's in there. One of the, one of the reasons.
And I think, wasn't there something about emergency purchases?
There is an emergency purchases section, Nancy, on page four. It's number three under the exceptions section.
And what would be the most you could spend on an emergency purchase?
There is no, there is no limit. But as you can, as you can witness from tonight's, where we came to you and asked for the release of funds to replace the console, the manager can make that determination. And I think you have to understand that the manager understands your policies and procedures and will act with those in mind in an emergency situation.
But you will always come to the Select Board to check first?
Not necessarily. If it's an emergency.
It's a true emergency.
We may, we may act and then let you know that we have acted. It depends on the emergency and what kind of time we have.
But hasn't the state law changed so Select Board members can now participate by phone for meetings?
We still only meet every two weeks.
It depends on, I mean, emergency means something that needs to be taken care of really quickly. We were lucky that we were, the, I guess we were lucky that the console.
No, no, I'm not thinking, I'm not talking about that.
No, that the console failed twice, and so they were able to come here, and we were able to vote on that. Had, had it, had it been a three-week, we have sometimes three weeks between our meetings when it's a long month. If that happened, then it might be that if it, if it failed a third time, we might have an emergency purchase and then coming to us saying, here's what we did.
Yeah, so a good example might be, Nancy, so let's say that we were, had experienced another hurricane or tropical storm-type event, and we were having catastrophic failure at the levee. We might have to rent equipment and material, buy materials immediately to work on that, to shore up that, that levee. And we're not going to have time to come to the Select Board and get approval for those purchases. Now, obviously, we have to come back and, and discuss what we had to do and justify that, but we just can't be hamstrung on those types of emergencies to try to get a special meeting together to purchase equipment that may save people's lives.
But I said, now, under the law, can't we do that right over the phone?
I, I also don't think that in the middle of the night, we're going to try to get, you know, seven Select Board members on the phone to purchase.
No, but I mean, if something happened in the middle of the night, you could probably get, just so we would have a heads up.
I'm sure that Stuart would email everyone about the efforts that were happening.
I think we'd get the word out to you via email.
After you took care of the levy.
Yeah, after we took care of the emergency.
Yeah, not before.
Please don't wait for me in the middle of the night before you take care of the levy. Go ahead and do it, and then tell me.
Yes.
Any other questions, Nancy?
Where would I find the policy? Are you saying there is no policy where you can sign leases without the Select Board having a public discussion?
But let's stay on this, let's stay on this policy.
I want to make sure it's not in this policy, so I know where to look for it.
Yeah, so if you have a quick answer to that, otherwise we have.
We don't have a policy. It's a practice.
Well, we should have a policy.
All right. So someone in the public had their hand up.
Jackie had her hand up.
Jackie, okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm shocked that so few people are left for this exciting conference.
Introduce yourself, Jackie.
Jackie Matts Bennington, Vermont. So I'm just looking at the, the last change you suggested here about changing 2018 to 24. I'm completely on board with the idea that we want to reflect that those grant thresholds remain the same. In my 30 seconds of Googling, which granted, might have failed me, it looks like the rates were indeed last set in 2018, where it says set at $10,000 in 2018, and that they may still be current, but maybe they weren't updated?
I actually, I don't have it with me. I apologize. But I did Google it and look for it as well, and found that they were updated and effective through 2024. They're actually proposing new rates, I think that are going to be, if passed, effective October of 2025. But from my research, I found that they were effective as of 2024.
Okay.
Not changed, but.
Well, it's, so they were set in 2018, and that's the current rate as of 2024. They weren't set in 2024.
It looks to me like they were confirmed.
Looks like they were confirmed again in 24.
I, I don't know what the exact wording was. I apologize.
Yeah.
But I did confirm. Sorry, I'll read it again.
That's where I got that from.
I thought you meant that those are the current rates, but that.
They are current. They are current as of 2024, where they were reset or confirmed.
Okay.
And they could be changing soon.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jackie. Your point's a good one.
Other questions? Seeing none, do we want a motion to update the purchasing policy with the staff recommendations?
I'd like to make the motion that we update the current, the policy with the staff recommendations.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any last-minute discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those, so is that unanimous? Aye? Aye? Nancy, put your hand up. Yeah, okay. All right. Any, oh, any no's or any abstentions, whatever those words are. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, everyone, and we'll be back with, we'll be back with some other policies for you to chew into, so thank you.
Can we do it earlier?
Yes.
Thanks.
Oh, my heavens. Okay. Approving the annual town meeting warning. Stuart?
Yes, you have in your packet the warning for this coming year for the floor meeting on March 3, and for the vote on March 4. You will note that there are three Select Board members that are up for three-year terms. The town moderator and the town treasurer are also on the ballot this year for terms of three years. Article one deals with the budget, and that's where you see some of the reserves that, that are established by the voters. established by the voters. And articles two through, I think it's seven, are the charter changes. I better make sure of that before I end that. Yes, I'm doing quite well this evening.
And we'll change that language, yep.
And then the rest of the, the rest of the articles, Article eight, Articles eight through 20 are all the petitioned and otherwise voter requests for funding for the next fiscal year. The two new ones on here are VCIL, that has petitioned for $10,000, and the Turning Point Center of Bennington has petitioned for $15,000. Otherwise, all of the others are what was approved last year. And I would ask for a motion to approve the warning, and I will circulate for signature.
Motion to approve the warning?
What's the budget increase?
The budget increase is four point-
We can have a question once we have the motion on this floor.
Okay.
Motion's on the floor. Okay, I think Nancy's in the middle of one. What did you say the budget increase was?
The overall budget increase is, I think, 4.54%. That's the combined budgets of general highway and fire.
Other questions?
Great, you mentioned one of the new petitions, VCIL. What is that acronym?
I'm sorry, it's the Vermont Center for Independent Living.
Okay, all right, great.
Article 13, it's 13. I just want to make sure, I swear I signed a petition for the council on aging. Did they not reach their goal to get signatures and they didn't up their-
Apparently not, it was not submitted in a timely fashion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great. What I'm going to do is hand this around. I'm going to send it down, and then we'll-
Send it down and back?
Yep.
I do have the one for signing here, if you don't mind.
Oh.
Not that one.
You gave me one that has a little thingy on it. Okay, all right, never mind.
Did I give you one with the little thingy?
Never mind, never mind, maybe you didn't, maybe I'm making it up.
I didn't mean that for you to have that one.
Nope, never mind.
You have all the others where the chair signs.
Got it, okay, never mind. You didn't see that happen. Okay. Keep going.
The manager's report.
And now we're onto the manager's report.
Oh, you finished that part, manager's report. Yes, please.
Okay, I have, we've taken care of the police department console, so that was one of my action items. The other two are relatively straightforward. One is a certificate of highway mileage. This is a document that the state presents to us for reimbursement for our highway mileage, class one, two, and three roads. This is done annually. It is accurate. I have a document here that, it doesn't require your approval, but it does require that it be circulated for signature. And unfortunately, there are only six signature lines. The state has a way of doing that to us, so I will circulate that for your signatures. It hasn't changed this year, and I, if Melissa was still here, she might be able to tell us how much this generates, but it's somewhere in excess of $200,000, I believe, a year. The health officer appointments is the next action item. Here, we have, we need a motion to recommend, because we are not making the appointments, the state of Vermont Health Department does, but we are recommending Brigitte Gallant as health officer and Paul Dansero as deputy health officer. These are the positions they have held for the last three years, and we would make our recommendations, the chair has the documents to sign, should the board agree. And this would be forwarded to the Health Department for their signature and appointment.
So we want to make that motion?
Motion to recommend Brigitte Gallant as health officer and Paul Dansero as deputy health officer.
Second, second the motion.
Great, any discussion?
I'd just say that I both worked with both of them on behalf of constituents, and they've been stellar, so I think they're great appointments.
Thank you, Tom.
Super. All right, anyone in the audience? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Nope, okay, great.
Jeanne, you have those in your packet.
That one you're allowed to sign.
Those I see, they have a little red on them, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And the last piece, because we are really getting quite late here, but we will be coming to you at some point in the future to talk about charging stations. Bennington owns two charging stations in this community. We have been offering those free to those folks who wish to use them, and unfortunately, those, the cost, because there are more electrical vehicles on the road, last month's cost rose to $759. We've been seeing that rising relatively quickly this past year. So we'll be talking with you about three options that Paul Dansero has worked on for us as our facilities director, and Mark Sawyer as our deputy facilities director. Don't need to discuss that now, but we'll be coming to you on a future agenda to talk about that. And that's all I have.
Great, okay, so, thank you. For upcoming agendas, what I know-
I have a question on what Stu just said.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I just brought this up at the budget meeting. I think we need to talk about it. Why should our taxpayers have to pay providing electricity?
Nancy, we'll put, it's not a warned item, so what he just said is we're putting it on a future agenda, and hopefully-
How far into the future?
Well, I'm hoping the next one, I was just trying to do upcoming agendas.
Yeah, we would prefer it sooner rather than later.
So I think for the upcoming agendas, what we have is a second charter review hearing, public hearing. We have two policies, the ethics policy, which we bumped last time, thank goodness we didn't put it on this agenda, and also the, if we can, taking up the social service organizations on the ballot policy, which is an existing policy, so it's one of the ones that we need to relook at, and then hopefully, charging stations. So, I mean, you don't want to jinx anything, but that's not a very long agenda, hopefully.
Oh, my God, she said it.
Oh, my gosh, okay, so that's all I know. Is there anything else pressing that we know has to be on an agenda?
Not, not pressing, but I've been asking for a Habitat.
Yes.
For the manager to come do a report.
Yes, and I'm hoping maybe not, let's, let's look, we'll look out and see if we're going, will the next meeting be in February? Is that where we are?
Yes.
Yes, so maybe that second week in February, the second meeting in February.
Which is the 24th, I believe.
Let's see if we can do the second meeting in February.
My request would be to have them come while you and I are still on the board.
Okay, well, the second meeting in February would do it. Okay, so let's plan to have Habitat.
And the group our taxpayers pay each year that audit our spending, look at the books, normally, they've been in here by now for a public presentation.
I'm sorry, can you start over again?
Sure, I'm sorry. The group our taxpayers pay each year.
The audit firm?
Yeah.
Yes.
Our audit.
So are they going to be coming in for, to give the presentation?
Yes.
One of the next two meetings?
Hopefully, no later than the 24th. We've been going back and forth with the auditors, they have, we have, they've completed their audit, and now we're moving through the draft of the audit. They've completed the single audit, and that, I think, is fixed. So we hope to have them here, probably not at the next meeting because of the size of the agenda, but perhaps on the 24th would be a good time.
All right, so we have Habitat and the audit for that second meeting in February. It's a nice balance.
They fill up fast, don't they?
Okay, all right, so that's good. All right, other business. Who wants to start? Sarah?
Sure, yes, so I'm very proud of my husband, Michael Nygroth, for being elected state representative and being appointed to appropriations, so we have somebody there on appropriations. And Mike and I will be doing coffee hour on this Saturday, so that's all I have. And it's at the coffee bar, sorry.
Where would the coffee hour be?
At coffee bar, and the hour is to be determined. We'll be putting it on a couple of social media sites.
Great, thank you. Jeanne?
One thing. I think it was back in June, you talked, Stu, about a state law being changed and the highway department having to go to Old Bennington. Has any decision or commitment been made yet?
No, I know that the Old Bennington trustees have reached out through our representatives to make sure that the legislature gives consideration to repeal of the legislation. If there is a bill put forward to repeal that, it will require a vote of the residents of Old Bennington before anything can happen, and then it would also require this board to give approval for the change.
I think we need to have a public discussion before the law gets changed, and I think each of us on the board needs to get the information that's on the Old Bennington website as far as the roads having to be repaired. I don't think a lot of people know about that.
So Nancy, the way an agenda, it has to have, there has to be something we can do about it, so we don't have agenda items and we don't have information, so we will wait until the, any change happens at the legislative level and-
On the docket.
Yeah.
Jeanne.
We don't have any information yet, so that, we will not have an agenda item.
Our town has not been responsible for 75 years. I think we need to have a public discussion before a law gets changed.
That, that's not with us, that's with your legislators. So you have, you know who your legislators are, those are the people you want to talk to, and we have somebody on transportation, we have a representative on transportation, Tim Corcoran, so I would suggest that that be the person you out, you reach out to.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind pulling together that information, that-
Sure, but not an agenda item.
How many miles of road or any, and presenting it to you at some point, so that you understand.
You can just put it, okay, you can put it in the manager's report, that would be helpful.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great, okay. Yes?
Wonderful that we have our folks on different positions in the legislature. Any way we can put something out to identify who these people are, if Will comes to see us.
Well, if you go, if you go on the website, all you have to do is just say, you know, legislature, and it gives you a list of everybody by county, by committee, I mean, 14 ways to Sunday. We can certainly ask our legislators to come, you know, like Will does, or to, if there's a particular issue, but it feels like that's sort of up to them.
Yeah, if you go on the website, if you just go on legislature, you can even attend the committee meetings virtually.
Right, I was just hoping to, I was just hoping to encourage citizens of Bennington to pay attention to who they are and where they are and what they can advocate for us, you know, it's good that Will comes here, and of course, Mary Morrissey is our regular guest, and now, I assume I can mooch a cup of coffee off of Mike and bend his ear at the same time, but yeah, I just-
Just say he's treating.
Huh? Especially if he, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ooh, little-known fact.
Yeah, I just encourage the public to take an interest, to hunt our representatives down, talk to them, advocate for themselves in the town, and put those guys to work, guys and girls to work.
Thank you. All right, with that happy news and, like, call to action, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, audience, and thank you for voting on that motion.